Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Fishon.
Here.
Mr. Drardina.
Here.
Mr. Coles.
Here.
Mr. Malka. Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mrs. Martin.
Here.
Here.
It's pretty lengthy agenda here this evening, so I'd like to just keep moving things along. We can get started, I suppose, here. What's the first one?
Yeah, the first one is, there's three tabled matters tonight. The first one is Shoe Craft Road Apartments located at 1048 Shoe Craft Road. Applicant Shoe Craft Road Apartments LLC is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed construction of four 10-unit apartment buildings on a 5.20 acre parcel located in a medium-high residential district under sections 269-5 and 350-14 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. Also with me is Nick Gracios from Kripper Homes. And Bruce as well. We're here tonight to a continuation of a sketch plan. We were here last month to talk about the sketch plan on 1048 Shoe Craft Road for four 10-unit buildings. And the property's approximately 5.22 acres located on Shoe Craft Road. And basically, we introduced the project at the last meeting and we got some feedback from the board regarding, there's existing house this year. And we looked at the option of subdividing off that house from the parcel. And what we did was we proposed a new lot, Lot 1, which would be 1.07 acres, and we applied the setbacks to it. And then we ended up with the 35-foot setback, the 10-foot setback, and the 35-foot setback from the existing barns between the house and the other, the climate building setbacks to the single family. When we did that, we were left with about 4.15 acres for the remaining lands of the back for the 40 units. Which, when we reviewed that for code, there's some code things that that pops up. There's a 5-acre minimum lot size for the multifamily. There's a 50-foot setback for the parking area off the back of the single family, or off the back of that house. And then the density would go from the eight units per acre to 9.6 acres. So I think the board, originally their conversation was, let's look at doing this as a single-family lot. And then see what the, you might be supportive of doing the variances for us to build the project in the back. So we looked at that. And then we went to the PRC meeting and we received some feedback on, we're not sure that you would like to do that and support the variances. There were some comments about, maybe we just leave that as one parcel and continue it on. I brought both plans with me, the one that shows the subdividing and then the one just that we brought in before that keeps it as one parcel. We would just leave the house, or that we just leave the structure in the front as a multi-part of the project and have the four 10-unit buildings in the back. So I think what we're looking for mainly is to get the feedback on the two options from the board so we can get some clear direction on how we should proceed. The other thing that came up, so the big thing in the PRC was the variance discussion, if we try to do the single-family house, whether we would want to try to go get variances or whether we would just want to do, leave the single-family house on the same parcel. The next thing that came up was, you know, we had this discussion about doing some amenities for these residents and we've discussed doing pickleball courts, benches, and a dog park as part of the project. And then there was also some comments about the turnaround being, right now, we are trying to do a dedicated turnaround to end that road to the town. I know that the town, I believe, Highway Superintendent has some comments about somehow segregating the entrance from the turnaround. So I think we're looking just for any feedback on all that to see what next steps would be and try to get your feedback on where you would like to see the project go next. And I have John and Bruce here to help answer any questions that the board has.
Before we start, just for the folks in the back, I was sitting back there the other day for a meeting and I was having a hard time hearing the board. Is it, how is it back there? Can you hear or is it tough? Kind of low? It is? Need to be picked up? You can or can't? I'm the loudest there. No, I'm just kidding. Try, okay, you should try and get yourself a little bit closer to the mic if that'll help. I know the town board meeting the other night, I was sitting in the back there and it was difficult to hear. Okay, with that, so, okay. I'm sorry? You can't hear me? Okay, we'll just have to do the best, we'll just be conscious and just get closer to the mic. Hopefully that'll work. Okay, with that, so your comment was, any questions? Anybody any questions on this evening? My concern was, the town tax department wanted to separate the parcels, I guess, am I right with that so far?
We discussed it with the, I'll let you.
Yeah, I talked with the assessor today and she said, there's really no concern with leaving the parcel as one. They just do, it's just a little harder to assess it for them, but it's not an issue that they can't solve. So they've done it before on other parcels in town.
Yes, it does exist, but it does create a number of problems when addressing, issuing addresses, emergency response vehicles and things of that nature. So although the assessment department said that they could do that, it is the town planning and zoning office that recommends not going in that direction.
To keep it separate.
To keep it separate. How many units are in the existing house?
It's currently a three-family, but upstairs unit, there's just a door in between the two units, so it's basically one with a door that they just have a padlock on.
Yeah, so it's essentially already a multifamily property and adding four additional apartment buildings with a 1048 Shoe Craft Road address, when you're not accessing the development from Shoe Craft Road would just be a nightmare on a variety of levels that we'd like to avoid.
Okay, you've got 40 units and, you know, again, this came up at the PRC. You're needing variances, they back right up to the buffer. There's no amenities and there's, what do you have, two parking spaces, a garage and one in a driveway, correct? Additional parking, is there additional parking here for visitors or?
There's some additional parking there, showing a lot here, a lot of entrances and then... Each garage has a spot in front of it, as well as a garage for each unit.
Do you feel this is overcrowding that parcel? I mean, I'm gonna ask that to the board, I mean, if you look at it, there's really not.
I do. I think it's cramming, seems like it's, they're trying to cram a bunch of people.
It's the four of them and they're all meeting the, you know, the setback requirement. Right up against the setback requirement, I should say. The 50-foot buffer.
So you have 40 units, how many parking spaces are there altogether?
Well, there's a garage for every unit and a parking spot for every unit. So each unit has two spaces.
And that's all, there's no other parking spaces?
Plus some overflow parking in the front along the access drive and we can add some more as well. I mean, it's a sketch, so we're looking for input and, you know, we'll incorporate your comments into our next stops here. You know, we have a 24-foot road in the middle, we've tried to provide, you know, enough room for a car in front of the garage as well as a garage space for each unit. The reason that, you know, some of the reasons that maybe we're getting pinched a little bit is because we're trying to keep the lot with that house on it, we're trying to keep everything, it's fairly spread out, the driveway, the barns way in the back. We're trying to make that lot conform as much as we can to the setbacks. So maybe there's a combination of both that we look at that, maybe it's putting the barn on the multifamily project and making that, incorporating that into the multifamily portion of it and subdividing it differently. We were just trying to keep that, sort of the way that lot is operating, together with that lot. Like I said, there was, we just sort of tried to draw that line where it made sense to create that lot based on the zoning and then keep the, keep that sort of together. But I think there are other options that we can consider for subdividing off that structure and, you know, helping with, if you're concerned with the density variance. I mean, the overall density of the site at the 5.22 acres allows for the density that we're proposing. At eight units an acre, you're allowed, we're allowed 41 units. So we would be looking to do the 40 units plus just having probably one unit in the existing structure that we would be running out.
But if you separate, see, if, according to engineering, if you separate the house, leave it separated and then use that as a separate parcel, that leaves you four acres of land with 40 units. You need five units per acre, that would be, you'd need five acres, so you're like an acre short for the number of units. I see what you're doing, you've got a plan, I mean, you're making it work on paper. My concern is this is gonna have to go to the zoning board for variances and it's gonna be up to them to whether they want to approve it. I'd rather see them make some changes on that.
I'd rather actually see the, instead of 10 units per building, knock it down to like nine units per building so that...
You bring it closer into conformance.
Brings in the conformance.
Or make a smaller, make a smaller building, one of the buildings there, and then use the additional space for, or either way, Derek, yeah, you're right, either way.
And it's interesting to find out, too, that the existing building has more units to begin with.
What I'm looking for is to get some open space in there. Somewhere for parking and somewhere for some activities. I know people, older people live there, well, doesn't mean we just sit on the couch all day long either, you know, so you want to have something for them to do.
Yeah, we can add those amenities.
Some sort of an athletic thing out there.
Yeah, we can add some pickleball courts and some other amenities, which we talked about briefly.
But the way this is, you can't, there's no room.
There's some room to add some space for some amenities.
What is the garage currently used for?
What was that?
What is that barn you currently use for?
It's basically empty at the moment. The guy who owned the house originally has some storage and a little wood shop in there, but we're just letting him use that as is for now.
Is there anything special about the barn?
No.
Is it an original barn?
There's nothing special about barn except for it's in really good shape. And it's part of the history of the town. That's one of the things we, we're trying to incorporate that as it is and try to keep it there for the aesthetics of the home. But if that's gonna be a hurdle, then we'll have to make other arrangements.
Looks like a good barn, actually.
The roof is as straight as a narrow, really is. It's been very well kept over the years.
Well, board, what do you, any suggestions, what do you think?
I'd actually rather, to develop it, I'd rather see the number of units reduced to meet the density requirements for the parcel. Because this is really, putting it in the back like there, it's too much stuff.
See, the back yards, actually, they go right up to the, right up to the buffer.
I do have one question for Josh about the two tax parcels versus one. Are there no other projects in town that have two addresses for the same tax parcel? We've got property in other towns where we have, it's all one parcel, we've got one road address and a different road address for the same parcel, so I'm just a little confused on that one.
It's that for multifamily development?
Yeah, we've got 24 units in Ontario that have the two addresses.
And do they access the development from the same road?
They do, but they got two different addresses, so it's kind of like, the roads intersect, one's on this intersection and the other one's on that, so I just wasn't sure if that's uncommon.
I mean, we certainly do have examples where there's multiple buildings on a corner facing two roads with the same address and different uses. Yeah, so it's not unheard of, but again, it just complicates a lot of things from the town's perspective.
Is there gonna be a centralized area for trash or does each individual unit have its own trash receptacles?
We can do it either way. Currently, we have it shown as one trash area kind of in the middle, but if you guys feel strongly one way or the other, we're willing to make a compromise.
Where buses are located?
Repeat that, please?
Yeah, center of the bed.
So that's big enough to accommodate 40 units? Sorry, excuse me. That's big enough to accommodate 40 units?
The bridge area. It's a compactor area with a, you probably get two enclosures there if you need to.
Going back to the Shoe Craft Road, just for a second, excuse me. You're going to have independent contractors, I imagine, bringing in materials, supplies, et cetera. Will you emphasize to them not to use Shoe Craft Road as a shortcut? Because traffic on that road is bad enough as it is already.
Can you repeat the question, I couldn't hear it.
With the independent contractors that you're going to be using, will you emphasize to them that they cannot use Shoe Craft Road as a shortcut? Because traffic on Shoe Craft Road is hellish already.
Yeah, the only access will be from the main entryway, there won't be access through the Shoe Craft entrance to the single-family house. They don't connect the driveways and we'll make sure they don't use that entrance.
Okay, I think bottom line is maybe take a look and see if you can get some amenities in there if you need to take off a piece of the building, just work it out. I think as far as the project, it's an allowed use, it meets the requirements, you know, for the area, but I think it's just too congested and I'd like to see some amenities, that's my opinion anyways.
And you need more parking spaces, too?
Well, that's part of it, yes. That's part of the amenities.
I guess one other thing, there would be a clarification for the rear setback on the existing parcel with the houses and the barn. Does that rear setback, is that supposed to apply to the silo too or not? It shows a silo on the back side of the barn, but that's within the setback area? It's not a livable structure, it's a leftover farm just behind the barn there.
Shows up on the plan, the site plan on the back side of the barn. Is that subject to the setback?
Yeah, it's, we took the 35-foot setback from the barn, we didn't go to the silo there. But also, if it makes sense for this application to look at a different way of subdividing that rear lot line for the single-family that, you know, helps with our density count for overall and everything and puts that barn on the other parcel, I think we could look at that if that makes sense to the board.
Yeah, personally just looking for a clarification as to whether or not that silo would be subject to the setback or not.
Technically, it's a structure, so it would.
So that parcel really should be a little bigger technically. Move to the other side of the silo.
Or we remove the silo.
Or get a, if you could possibly get a variance for the silo, that, I don't think that would be an issue, it doesn't really impact the, doesn't impact the apartments nor the single-family, so it would be a simple variance, I think, for that. I think that'd be the easiest thing to resolve. All right, anybody anything else? Derek?
I'd love to see less apartments.
Get some openings, yeah, some open area in there, yeah. Okay, with that, I guess we're okay, fellas? Wanna go forward with that? You're set up for the zoning board next week, right?
No, we didn't apply for any of the variances. We wanted to, we wanted to come and get your feedback before we did that.
Hey, you know, change things around, but it's just, it's, that's bottom line.
I think we understand. Any other questions?
You wanna make some changes in it? Make an attempt to fit something in there, do whatever way you feel is acceptable to the town, to the board? Do that, we'll go with that, okay? All right, thanks a lot, Stu.
Thank you.
Okay, my question, what's your second?
Second tabled matter on the agenda tonight, Waterview, excuse me, Apartments Phase 3, located in the northwest corner of Willow Point Way and Nautical Mile Drive. Applicant Legacy Development Company Incorporated is requesting sketch plan review associated with a revised proposal to construct six two-story buildings consisting of 56 total units and one community center on a 13.15 acre parcel located in a medium-high residential district under section 269-5 and 350-14 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Chris Nadler, General Counsel for Mark IV Enterprises. Here with me today, we have Chris DiMarzo, President of Mark IV and owner of the Waterview Phase 3 property. Also David Cox, our Design Engineer from Pastoro Associates. Tonight, we're here for sketch plan review. We'd like to briefly review the history of the project, give you some background, go over our current proposal, which as you know, has been significantly reduced and made to be more in keeping with the neighborhood. We'd like to review the materials we've submitted for our full site plan application, go over the review process and where we are in it today. Then David Cox will talk about some of the technical details of the project and will be available to answer any questions that the board might have. At the conclusion of our sketch plan review tonight, we've asked the board to declare intent to be lead agency for Seeker and make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals where we're going to appear next week at this time. And then after going to the zoning board, we'll come back for site plan approval. As you know, this project was approved for a seven-story, 158-unit apartment building in 1986. That approval was well-known to everybody in town and we've pursued it over the years. We've come back with reduced versions of the project over the years. And in August of this year, we came back with a proposal for two three-story apartment buildings with 90 units. After meeting with this board, the zoning board, and hearing comments from the public, we went back to the drawing board, made significant reductions, and made an effort to make a project that fit with the neighborhood. What we're proposing now is two-story townhouse-style buildings, a total of 56 units, each of which will have its own garage, its own driveway, and own private entrances, clubhouse and sport courts. We do need some variances which are similar to what already exists in the neighborhood. Our driveways are about the same distance to the right-of-way as the current Waterview Phase 2 and Waterview Phase 1, which is the homeowners association. So we'll need some front setbacks from the zoning board. And we'll need a residential buffer between zoning districts. The one we're proposing is similar to the buffer between the existing Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Waterview, to the existing residential zoning district immediately to our north. We've submitted a full set of site plans and site plan application to the town. We've submitted Seeker environmental assessment form, a traffic report. We've attended a few PRC meetings with town staff. I know Pastoro has a few revisions to make based on our most recent meeting with the PRC. We're here tonight for sketch plan review. We're gonna go next week to the zoning board and come back in December for site plan approval. Again, we'd ask that this board declare intent to be lead agency, commence its coordinated review, and make a recommendation to the zoning board regarding our variance requests. David, you wanna talk about some of the technical aspects?
Yeah, I would still like to just highlight some of the reductions that we've done.
Maybe if you use that microphone, though.
So in 1986, it was a seven-story building. And then in 2016, we came back with a revised five-story building, same configuration. August 24, came back with a three-story building. And then our current proposal now is a two-story, so 7, 5, 3, 2. It's like a 70% reduction in the number of stories. Units went from 158 units, down to 98, down to 90, and now we're at 56 units. So once again, in that 65 to 70% reduction in number of units from where the first approval was. And then total building square footage, we were at 233,000 square feet. In 2016, we were 144,000 square feet. August 24 was 112,000 square feet and now proposed is 76,000 square feet. So once again, another, you know, 65 to 70% reduction in the number of square footage for all the buildings on the property. So stories, units, total square footage, all a drastic reduction that we've done. So we, when we were here last time and went before the zoning board, we really heard, you know, can you reduce the heights of the building? Can you reduce the size? Can you have it more in keeping with the neighborhood? So that's when we went to the drawing board and really... You know, the surrounding area and the surrounding properties, it's the townhouse-style buildings, so it really looks like one kind of project now, with just an overall global townhouse development. So, there's the building elevations. Up here, so here's the clubhouse, so very much in the middle. With the style for the, I'm not that building, so very much a residential style. You know, peaked roofs and architectural styles similar to, you know, of the single-family house, so really fits in much better with the community. It will have, each building will have individual totes for trash. And we have completing, you know, essentially we have 360-degree access all around the property by connecting to McEwen, so for fire safety and everything, really completing that full loop around the building and putting that clubhouse and those sport courts kind of in the center is a main attraction for the residents there that they can utilize that clubhouse area. So yeah, it's a pretty straightforward project. We have reduced the size and scope substantially and feel that this fits in much better with the community. And we can answer any questions you have.
Well, that's a major improvement over what's been coming in, you know, on this site, yeah. I like the idea of you lowering them to just two-story standard type places, conforms with the existing buildings on the site. The one thing I think I did mention the other day, there was, along McEwen Drive, there's, see those driveways coming out, there's six driveways?
Yeah.
Come out onto McEwen Drive? Put an interior drive and connect them so that there's just like maybe one driveway coming out?
Absolutely, we're gonna make that revision. Absolutely, we're gonna make that revision this week.
Okay, that would be an improvement, I think. You see what I'm saying? Eliminate, eliminate all those curb cuts. Just have one coming out on the McEwen. The interior is all private drive. Doesn't really affect anything there, that's standard in a subdivision like that. That would be the biggest thing. Clubhouse, I think that's a terrific asset for that project. That's a major big change in there, it's nice. Now, with the proposed two-story one, it's in the E-Pod district, the lower part there?
Yeah, I believe a portion of the six-unit building is in
Yeah, the small one.
Is in the D-Bud, steep slope.
Then it has to get a special permit then, right? Josh, I guess, you would have to have a special E-Pod district?
That's correct. It could be handled by this board as a part of site plan review.
Through the approval, okay, yeah, all right. All right, anybody, any questions? Have you seen the other drawings and any comments on it?
I think it looks great.
It's a big improvement. Yeah, I agree.
Are there extra parking places somewhere?
There's extra parking at the clubhouse. And I think we have more than two units on some of the units, sorry.
Yeah, so there, every unit has its own garage space and then there's one parking space in the driveway outside the garage. So each, each unit has two parking spaces plus ten parking spaces at the clubhouse.
Okay, anybody else, any questions?
Do some of the units have a two-car garage or is that?
They're just one-car garage.
I'm just talking about the pictures there. It's like on the end of, the end of each building, it looks like a two-car garage.
Yeah, some of, some of the, some of the garages share, share a driveway. So that the two driveway, or the two garages are per separate units.
Okay, all right, all right. All right. This isn't a public hearing, so it's not open to the public, but is there, are there any neighbors here in regard to this? Okay, you know what? If, if you can just keep it to a few comments or something, might help us out a little bit with anything. Where I think we can entertain that. But just keep it to a couple, three minutes, not long. All right, alls we're gonna ask is give us your name. You actually should say. You can go up and talk and then just go out and say if you haven't already, okay? You want to go upstairs, go ahead. Is it upstairs?
So I'm Charlie, Sarah Johnson. We're right at four forty McEwen.
Okay.
We, we kind of had the same concerns you had, obviously, with those six driveways that are egressing into the single-family district. I haven't seen that type of development yet in the town of Webster. We've been driving around, we've been on the satellite. And seven, even if you count the last driveway. And then in terms of the buffer, right, between the two districts, those properties coming directly into that R3 district, the ones facing McEwen, heading, facing north, was our biggest concern. And the other thing is that prop, the development itself, I know the parcel is listed at thirteen, but they're actually only developing on four point, I think we look, I think about four-point-one-seven acres is the total area of this particular development, right? Kind of speaks to the same issues and questions you had about the Shoe Craft property, right? Fifty-six units being crammed into four-point-two acres is really what's happening here. Which is our biggest concern. If you, if you look at the, I guess, the, the building facing McEwen and then the building to the west of that one, as well as the E-Pod there, that's twenty-six units whose primary access is probably going to be down McEwen and then into that area. McEwen's only twenty feet wide. There's also a pumping station in the north, I guess, the northwest corner, if you would look at that picture, right, right there. So you're talking a lot of congestion that's coming down into this area potentially. Okay? So again, our, our primary concern is the buffer and is the, is the congestion associated with the development.
So along, you got a good point. So along McEwen Drive, which is, you're saying your biggest concern right there. If those driveways are eliminated, they could put a berm and landscape they had across there that basically would hide the whole project.
Any buffer as, as defined, I guess, in the town code. Something, because right now, at least in that description, or even in their site plans, I think there's about four or five shrubs, that's all there is. So we're clearly not against saying you can't develop this property. We just would like it to fall somewhat in line with what the town intends for this type of development, specifically as relates to this type of, uh, single-family district.
As a visual, the best thing I can think of is, this would be similar to, is Hillsborough over, um, off of Bay Road there. That would be very similar to this type of the situation right here. It's not congested and I believe Mark IV built that too, didn't you? Did they do it years ago? Thought they did that in there. Am I right, Chris? Right? I thought so, yeah. See that, my mind's still working. Okay. And that's, that's as close as I could relate this to looking like. But, okay, thanks for your comments. Okay, is there anybody else wanting to give a comment or something? Just, yeah, go ahead, just make a quick one.
I'm Dave Guyer, I live at four hundred McEwen Drive. My property, property directly attaches to the property in question. I, I just, both Charlie and myself did send some information, including drawings to both boards. You did receive that.
Yes, we do.
For example, the road that's coming in actually goes onto my property, onto a corner of my property, where it curves into McEwen, which is a strange way for a road to attach to another road, to have a fifty-six degree curve. And that actually goes onto my property. So it's, we certainly need that to be addressed. And then the comments from the board for the, the prior, the Shoe Craft Road, I thought were very enlightening about developing forty units on a five-acre or four-acre property. This is fifty-six units on a four-point-one-seven property. If we look at what's being developed. So we're actually putting a lot more units into a very small, much smaller unit, smaller area. So I would ask the board, continue to look at how do we put the right number of units onto this very small piece of property? It's certainly being developed at a higher rate than, than an MHR facility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chris, you guys want to address any of the issues? I mean, or just?
No, thank you very much. We appreciate the board's input and happy to answer any other questions.
One of the big advantages personally that I see here, it isn't, the other one was just blocked. There were just four buildings locked together, it looked like a military camp. This has got some style to it, this has got potential for birmingham around the property. Your point, Mr. Guyer, about the driveway, your house is right across from that?
My, my property is mainly this corner by the road curves into
Okay. So if cars are coming out of there at night, would those lights be shining on you?
If I am coming out of my driveway and they're curving in, there's potential for intersections. There's a couple of houses up acting that way.
Well, my concern would be if cars are coming out at night, would lights be shining into your house or something? Oh, well, then nobody there cares. So we're okay with that. No, I was concerned if it was coming by your house and the lights were shining, we'd ask maybe they could put a berm in front of that.
If the traffic's going the other way.
What's that?
If the traffic's going the other way into the development, it'll shine.
Yeah, well, that's. And again, the advantage to this, it, this actually, all you should do, what am I saying? You were looking at the map also. You've got the building in the center, there's open space around it, there's amenities for it. This is not even close to that type of a operation as the other one was. In my opinion anyways, this is much more spacious open. And these are more built like individual homes and it conforms to the units that are existing there right now. The same type of units that they are in Hillsborough and Willow Point right now. All right, anybody, any other concerns or questions? So what do you guys think?
The one thing that I haven't seen addressed or discussed on this is that, you know, the existing site plan that's, you know, that's received, you know, it's dated July twenty twenty-four, it does show a pond on this parcel. And my understanding
Could you speak up so we can hear?
So this map, it shows the parcel, it shows the property lines, general sewer lines, its utilities. It shows the pond in the corner of this development, the southwest corner of the development. And that pond, when you go and you look at it, you see that there is a pipe that goes into it and it appears to be the quality component of stormwater management. And that pond seems to be, it's not being addressed really as part of this project. It was part of the stormwater management facility for the overall project to begin with. And I don't see anything on how this is being replaced, incorporated into the new design. It's just having a corner of the building literally built over the pond from the, the best I could tell by looking at the alignments. It's really like the southwest corner of the building number. I don't know if these actually have numbers on them, the one that's in the southwest portion of the parcel there.
Yeah, so what, what we're doing is we're creating a new stormwater pond kind of in the bottom-left corner of the property on the opposite side of the road. And then we have three bio-retention areas that kind of surround the clubhouse and the courts in there. So we're putting in bio-retention areas, we're putting in that, that new stormwater pond and there is some additional underground storage as well.
Is that separate pond that you're proposing, is that on the same parcel or is that on a different parcel?
Different parcel owned by the same owner.
Still owned by the same owner. But it's not part of the two parcels that are being considered as part of this development. It's on a third parcel, correct?
Correct.
Now is that, other than shown very lightly and you're drawing C-102, which just says proposed, actually it says proposed sand filter on it. Which one of these drawings actually shows the drainage and the structures and so forth that would be associated with that new pond?
Yep, the utility plan shows, shows the, the piping that goes to it and the grading plan shows the, the grading for it. So keep going. There, right there. That, that one right there shows the, the piping going to it.
So if that's on a separate parcel, but you have to have an agreement with yourself, I guess, right?
Yes, yeah.
Would that be how it would work?
Yep.
Okay.
We want to, you know, as part, as the project goes ahead, we want to submit all the design characteristics for that. Because I imagine that's now, you know, pick up this parcel, it's gonna pick up the rest of the developments since that's what that original pond was for.
I didn't catch that last part.
The original storm source system, the one to the pond that the building is being built on top of
Yep.
served the rest of the development. So when you put together your stormwater management plan, that's gonna incorporate the existing and the new development into it. You just want to make sure that it will.
Yes, yes, it takes into account everything.
Okay, well, this is just for sketch anyways tonight. Actually, what, well, this is gonna have to have Seeker, correct?
It will. This is not considered an actual application though, right, Josh?
Well, they did submit for preliminary final, but because of the substantial changes since the last time, brought it back as a sketch plan.
The paperwork is all for preliminary.
Right, we have a full application in that sense.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, the seeker will, will be required.
So if we get your seeker at it, then we have to make a determination to be lead, to take, or?
You would then, yeah, declare your intent to be lead agency for the project.
You have to classify the, the type of action.
So this would be, what, what?
It's an unlisted action.
Unlisted action, correct? So this would be an, okay, well then, let's think of, you want, you want to do it?
I'm not sure that it would be unlisted.
Why not?
It has several components to it. You're taking a parcel, two parcels combining them together and that's how you're coming up with the density that you're using for the developments going on there. Part of the parcel, though, is located in a couple of different protection overlay districts that we have. And just simply because of the proximity of it and the number of units involved, I would have to double-check, but I believe that would bring it into the category of, you know, everything gets reduced down by twenty-five percent and that kind of thing, that it's gonna wind up being a type-one seeker. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any control whatsoever over the mics in the back.
Oh, you don't have
I'm talking as close as I can do it, so I'll try to do it, but I don't.
Just that we would be lead agency.
Well, no, you, you don't have to, it's your determination today.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we have the ability right now.
Okay.
No, excuse me. That, that's, we, we don't meet any type-one thresholds, including the twenty-five percent thresholds. We don't, we don't, it's an unlisted action.
It is.
I'm, I guess I, it's nice that's your interpretation, but we were not prepared to establish any kind of lead agency tonight as part of this sketch plan review. I would actually like to be able to take a look at it closer and see if it does meet any of those thresholds. I have not had that opportunity.
I mean, even if it, if it did, that still wouldn't preclude you from declaring your intent to be lead agency.
It would require a classification of the action, though.
Okay.
But there's something we can't classify.
Tony, you don't have to make that classification tonight because there's not an official application here.
Yeah, okay.
And if Derek does have concerns
All right, then why don't we just hold on to that? We'll do that, you know, you come back for preliminary approval.
Well, it's gonna add another month and a half to the project. You know, we did submit, as Josh said, we did submit full, full preliminary site plan applications. And what we discussed at PRC was doing a declaration of intent to be lead agency, which does require a, a classification of the project, but it's not just my opinion, it's your entire town staff discussed it and believes this to be a, a lead agent, uh, unlisted action, including a representative, if I may say, of MRB Group who was at the PRC meeting and everyone concurd it was an unlisted action. So, you know, declaration of intent to be lead agency is also something that can be rescinded. It turns out it's something else, you can rescind that. But I would ask that you make the declaration of intent and commence a coordinated review.
It can be rescinded, like you said.
As discussed.
And also, it's, you're going before the zoning board next week, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
The zoning board could also, because it's gonna be a coordinated review likely either way, whether it's a type-one or an unlisted. The zoning board next week could make that determination as, as a compromise, right? Derek has concerns that this might be a type-one rather than unlisted, rather than declaring and then rescinding. There's an option for the zoning board next week to simply declare the type or classify the action, declare themselves lead agency under a coordinated review.
I don't think the zoning board wants to be a lead agency.
I can't speak for the zoning board, but that's certainly, that is possible, because it'll be a coordinated review.
Yeah.
But Tony, that, uh, Mr., you are correct. You certainly could make the, the classification, declare yourself lead agency and then rescind at a later date.
Then why don't we just do that? Is that okay, that work with you? Then why don't we just do that? Does that, okay, that work with you Derek? If it doesn't fall into the category.
Yeah.
When it listed, then we'll rescind it.
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. Then I'll make a motion that we, planning board would deem itself to be lead agency for the project and it would be an unlisted action.
Correct.
Okay? That'd be a motion, need a second?
I'll second it.
You have a second?
Mister Kishani?
Aye.
Mister Cosell?
Aye.
Mister Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltman?
Aye.
Mister Anderson?
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I have to say names.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, Mark.
It's okay.
Aye.
Okay, that, that, so far it's just basically got it on the table. You're going to review it and you, you'll come up with a solution to it and we'll go from that point, that's all. Okay? That work, all right, there she goes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Put their hands up out there.
Well, we're in a meeting, so we didn't.
Yes. Wait a minute, we can't hear you man. If you, if you want to come up, you can come up and say something, go ahead. Just give us your name and address, okay? Wait until you get to the microphone, just stick in there.
Thank you.
There you go.
Four forty-eight McEwen Drive.
Okay.
And I seen that they got the driveway for every union. It's not really big, but these people, they got company. Where are they gonna go park? There's no place to park. McEwen Drive, it's not really wide to, to park all these cars.
Am I understanding right? In other words, your concern was the driveways?
Yes. Because McEwen Drive is not really big. I got company, my neighbor's next door, she's got company. Those people, they don't have no place to park. And they got the pan and they got the gully. So where's all the room to put all this scandal?
Well, it's, we can get into a whole dialogue on that, but if the road, if those driveways don't come out onto there, their driveways will be inside, there will be just one driveway coming out.
Okay, these people, they got company, like the husband or wife?
No, we got that. They, they've got extra parking spaces in there for that.
Right.
Yes.
They got enough space to park the cars?
That's the idea of it. Excuse me. That's the same as any other project that comes in. We require them to have enough parking spaces, so if visitors come, there's a place for them to park.
Okay, what are all these people, they're gonna go out for McEwen Drive? We got problem already now to get out from McEwen Drive when they're close to the bridge for the boat. Sometime we stay twenty minutes before we can get out from the street. Because there was so much traffic on McEwen Drive. And Bay Road. So they got another street to all these people to get out? If it's an emergency, it's a fire, how these people, they're gonna get out?
Well, if that was the case, I think they would come right out onto Bay Road, onto, on the private drive.
They got there?
It, it all connects, it's all one circuit.
It's all.
Thank you.
May I, may I, I'm sorry, may I say a little bit just for this part of the, the flow of traffic? Um, just in front of the microphone?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if anyone's ever actually like been to McEwen Drive, if you've seen it in person. The road itself is a very intimate road. Um, and even if you were to take out those six driveways, the amount of traffic you're going to end from the top, at the top entranceway and the bottom entranceway is too much for that road to hold. It's a very intimate road. You can barely fit one car going down one way and one up the other way. So I just invite, like, I would invite you all to actually, like, if you haven't already, be, go to visit the space.
Many times.
You haven't seen it, it's a very intimate road, so any little bit of traffic you're adding into that, to that road, I think it's too much for that road. So my question is, what would you be doing to add more, uh, would you be able to widen the road? How does that impact the town's property on the other side? But also just the idea again of the intimacy of that neighborhood and that it is very residential. What does that do to the integrity of the residential aspect of it? And also the safety of that road of McEwen, we have children on that road.
Okay, I don't want to get into this whole thing, but what you're saying is something that comes up at every meeting.
Yeah.
Every subdivision. Everyone is a shangri la, we understand all that, but the road is there, it's a dedicated road, we have to work with it.
But the width of the road is what I'm concerned about.
The what?
The, the width of the road.
I don't know what the width of it is, it's, it's two lane road though.
It's barely a two lane road, I think it's like twenty feet. It's not that, it's, but it's not, if you look at it, it's not, it's barely enough for two cars to go up and down on the same, in the same direction. So I'm just looking at more or less like the safety aspect of it. And now that it's two different directions happening, even if there weren't the six driveways, and the impact that that has on the people who are already living there and the safety for our children, that's, that's what I'm speaking to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay, yes. All right, what else have we got to do?
There's nothing, I guess, that's about it. Yeah, someone else wants to.
Well, we don't, I won't keep draping, this is, this isn't us. All right, go ahead.
I live at four forty-four.
Give us your name too, I'm sorry.
McEwen, pardon?
Give us your name also.
Karen Jenner. My concern is just what Sarah was saying.
Oh, okay, then we covered that.
It's the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
You have the potential for adding a hundred and twelve cars.
Okay, ma'am, look, we, this is not a public hearing. I said I'd open it to a few things. I don't want to repeat everybody saying the same thing. We, we got the picture. Everybody has a concern for the parking, for the traffic.
Get an answer to how this.
We can't answer that tonight, that's.
No, I know the plans for it tonight, but will it be answered?
We'll have them address it.
And we will get the results?
At, at their next meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't mean to be courted on this, but you know, again, it isn't, I just wanted to open and get a few comments to see where we stood and that to get a whole dialogue going. Anyway, so there we are. Uh, where do we go from here? We're all set with it, I guess. Lead agency, we're taking that.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your comments.
Okay, thanks a lot. Have a good day. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the third and last tabled matter on the board tonight, Birdsong at Conifer Cove subdivision. Located between the east end of Conifer Cove Lane and Webster Road. Applicant Grove Underhill LLC requesting preliminary final subdivision and site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the creation of nine lots for construction of eight single family residences and an associated stormwater management facility on a five point five five acre parcel located in a R three single family residential district under sections two six nine dash eleven, two nine six dash twenty and three five zero dash twelve with the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Peter Vars from BME Associates. Appearing tonight on behalf of Grove Underhill Properties LLC. Uh, also in attendance is, um, Mitch Brodsky, uh, the owner of Grove Underhill Properties LLC. As mentioned, we're here this evening to, uh, continue and we hope complete, uh, the seeker review and the subdivision and site plan review for Birdsong, uh, at Conifer Cove. It's a proposed single family residential for sale subdivision, uh, proposing eight resident, single family residential lots plus an additional ninth parcel that would be a town parcel for the stormwater management area. All to be situated on five point five acres in a residential R three zoning district. We've appeared before this board several times over the past several months. Back in August, uh, at your August sixth, uh, planning board meeting, at that point in time, we presented to this board the revised plan where we, uh, disconnected, I'm going to say the public street and, uh, from Conifer Cove Lane with just an access out to Route two fifty. Uh, and we had addressed the planning board, town engineer and PRC comments with the revised plan submission. Uh, it should also be noted with that, at that time, we also, uh, updated the seeker documentation, providing the full EAF part one. Uh, as the board classified the action as a type one action and subsequently declared their intent to be lead agency. Back in September, on September eighteenth, the planning board did declare themselves lead agency for the purposes seeker and initiated the coordinated review. Uh, on October twenty-second, we provided you updated materials as a result of our appearances before the board, uh, in August and September. And it consisted of three primary things, uh, based on comments that had been received. First of all, we provided you information and a memo addressing that the, uh, the project's conformance with the provisions of Town Code Section two ninety-six, which is, governs the subdivision of land within the town of Webster. We also provided you an updated plan set of the final preliminary final subdivision and site plans uh, that, uh, addressed the most recent comments from the town engineer MRB group and the PRC. It also included, uh, drawing, uh, number twelve in that set where we did provide the results of the requested tree survey that this board asked, where we identified trees greater than eight inches in diameter. Uh, we identified those trees in the area outside of the development footprint as discussed and directed, uh, by the board, acknowledging that the development area from the rear of the houses, uh, through the right away to the rear of the houses across the street would be developed as part of the residential, uh, subdivision. We located basically the trees around the perimeter. Trees were primarily, uh, locust and poplar trees and, and there were ash trees uh, and several, uh, dead and diseased ash trees. Uh, what we did also, um, do though, though the property, we did confirm that the property is not part of an environmental protection overlay district or a wood lot protection overlay district that was confirmed with town staff. And it is also, uh, to be clearly known that, uh, the R three zoning district does not require any buffering, uh, provisions as it relates to adjoining properties. But with that being said, what we did do at, uh, what the applicant is proposing is we have modified the rear yard grading such that we're pulling it into the lots as it is the developer's intent to save those trees greater than eight inches in diameter around the perimeter of the property primarily along the south and north property lines. And those have been identified on the grading plan, uh, that's within, uh, the drawing set. The, these, um, uh, these trees are, will be saved and identified for saving during the construction process. In addition, we've identified a handful of other trees in what would be the future rear yard areas. The developer's intent is to keep those trees in place until the time of house construction, house design. Given basically the future homeowner, the ability that if they choose a house design where that tree could be saved, it's there to be saved in lieu of just, uh, uh, cutting the rear yards, uh, free of the trees uh, to maximize the building lot, so that is something, uh, that they are willing to do. In addition, we did provide you a proposal landscape plan, uh, proposing an additional twenty, uh, trees along, uh, the route, the east property line, the Route two fifty, um, uh, frontage, uh, creating a landscape buffer. It will supplement the existing maples that are along the Route two fifty right away. Also additional trees and shrubs, uh, in the northwest corner around the, uh, west property line to demarcate this subdivision from the Conifer Cove Lane, uh, properties to, to the west. In addition to those two items, we also provided you information, uh, as it concerns to seeker. We provided you, uh, responses to the eighteen questions that are contained in the part two EAF uh, that this board needs to review in order to make their seeker determination. The information we provided to you was based upon the design information presented in the preliminary and final site and subdivision plans you have before you. Information provided in the engineer's report that was submitted and, or prepared and submitted uh, in support of the information in the EAF and as presented on the design plans. We also, uh, completed it as it relates to the information provided on the part one EAF. Also from the EAF mapper from the DEC website, that gives us information on natural features, habitats and, and natural resources. And also based on agency review comments we've received to date. Uh, the Monroe County Water Authority, the County Health Department and the New York State Department of Transportation. In preparing that information, we also utilized guidance provided in the New York State DEC Environmental Assessment Form Workbook, which is provided to, uh, provides guidance as, as in order to assess potential impacts, uh, as it relates to those eighteen questions. It has the thresholds to be reviewed so that you can make a determination, uh, to the potential significance of any impact. Based on the information we've provided to you, we believe it does support a determination that the project does not result in any potential significant impact. Any potential impacts, um, are being addressed through the project design, such as the stormwater management plan, the construction erosion control plan, the traffic, um, uh, information provided to the state DOT. And along with consistency with community land, with the community's land use plan and character of the surrounding area and its compliance with the comprehensive plan. The, several comprehensive plans of the town of Webster has consistently identified this five point five acre parcel as designated for residential development, the R three residential zoning that's proposed. The plan is prepared, uh, in compliance with that zoning criteria as it relates to lot size, lot width setbacks. There are no variances or waivers from any of the lot standards being requested. So with that, um, we just wanted to give you that update on what we've, uh, have, have, uh, done since we were last here back in September. Uh, and we can answer any questions that the board may have on that information.
Okay, one thing I'm going to ask Josh, these, all these documents are on the website, are they?
I don't believe a lot of them are. The plans, the latest plan sets are on the website.
Okay. The, uh, BME is, is gentleman just stated that they've addressed all the comments that were requested. There were eighteen different comments that were requested and there's a file, I, I suggest that this should probably be put on site, don't you think? So we can, people can see it if they wanted to see it. But everything has been addressed. We've looked at it, read it, I've made notes on it and so on, and I don't know what more we could do with that. In the letter from, uh, the attorneys, uh, her, Seacrest and Emery, they, they took specific things, legal matters here. They addressed those on, on their letterhead too. So we have covered everything for these eight homes on the site. I see nothing further that really, that I see, uh, can be changed at this point. But it is a public hearing. If anyone wants to get up and speak, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. We're going to limit this to three minutes, three minutes. Last time we made it five minutes. There's no more need for five minutes, three minutes, and it will be no longer than three minutes, okay? So if anyone wishes to speak, come ahead up.
Mister Chairman, I have submitted a letter, um, the board received it, it was dated the eleventh.
It was submitted.
Do I have a duplicate copy for the board, if that would be helpful?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Can I do a copy of this, uh, for the chairman?
Here's a copy of the letter that we submitted yesterday regarding this matter. It does address many issues.
I saw it online.
Yeah?
So what are we supposed to do with this thing now?
I would ask, so you pulled off making decisions, so you've had a chance to review that. And I'll go ahead and try to summarize the, the issues presented there. Oh, and I can provide, um.
Do you require contact information for the minutes?
Uh, yes, you'll be required to state your name and address.
I will do that, but just in case you can't understand me at all or something.
If that's what's given, we haven't got it now.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, honorable board members, my name is Jacob Zodlin. I'm an attorney and partner at the Zodlin Group here in Rochester. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Webster citizens for the Birdsong Trail area in opposition to the site plan and subdivision applications for the Birdsong at Conifer Cove project. The project is proposed to be located on a heavily forested parcel containing extensive vegetation and mature trees that the conservation board recommended retaining. Significantly, the project is adjacent to town property and parkland that contains the Bird Sanctuary Trail and. the Bird Sanctuary Trail in Mill Creek. I'm gonna talk briefly about nonconforming issues and uses and conditions. As a preliminary matter, site plan and subdivision approval cannot be granted because the Town Code does not allow issuing such approvals when doing so would create nonconforming uses or conditions. We see that in 296-10C and 296-19C. Here, the project would create nonconforming uses or conditions, and therefore variances are required for the following reasons. I'll highlight just a couple. One, the project would establish a new structure and use, i.e. the stormwater management facility, in an R3 district where such uses and structures are not permitted under the Town Code. That's 350-12A. Additionally, the code requires a minimum rear setback of 50 feet for all lots in the R3 district. But here, the proposed project cites the stormwater, stormwater management facility less than 50 feet from the rear property line. Again, that's a variance issue. And the third variance that I want to talk about is because the code requires a minimum front yard setback of 50 feet on corner lots on major highways. That's Town Code 350-12B5A2. And here, the project proposes to create Lot 4 at the corner of Route 250, which is a major highway as defined by the Town Code, Section 350-3. But Lot 4 only provides a 40-foot front yard setback, which is 10 feet less than what is required. Accordingly, several variances would be required for this project, which I go into in more detail in my letter. Therefore, subdivision and site plan approval cannot be granted without conditioning such approvals on obtaining the required variances, and Seeker has to involve a coordinated review with the zoning board and consider those cumulative impacts. I'll touch briefly on the Seeker issues now, because I know the chairman and the attorney were discussing Seeker on the last application.
He's exceeded the three-minute threshold, but I'll leave it up to the board if you'd like him to continue.
If it's okay with Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I think in this case, yeah, this is, go up, keep going.
Okay, and I'll, I'll keep it brief and ongoing to the Seeker things. So because the project cannot proceed without these discretionary approvals that I discussed, the variances, the Seeker view of the project has to involve this coordinated review. And that has to involve, interested in involve agencies before determination of significance is made. That's why I was saying you have to coordinate with CBA on these several variances that haven't been even requested at this point. And then you have to do the cumulative impacts review. Moreover, because the board already determined that it's a type one action, there's a legal presumption that it will require a POS deck and preparation of an EIS. So I'm not gonna go over all the reasons why I think a POS deck is required, but I wanna highlight some of the, the high points, so I keep it, keep a good use of your time tonight. First, the project's impacts on plants and animals indicate they will have serious adverse impacts on the environment. This concern is, is especially pronounced here and is compounded by the existed forest, forested condition of the property and the fact that the property adjoins town parkland. Whenever you adjoin town parkland, you have to be concerned about the impacts that a project will have on the parkland. In, in this case, that also includes the Bird Sanctuary Trail and Mill Creek. Town Code, Design Guidelines, and the Comprehensive Plan uniformly emphasize environmental preservation, maintaining trees and vegetation and natural resources. It even talks about special protections for woodlots or EPods. And all of these facts, which I, which I go into in more detail in the letter, demonstrate a strong town policy in favor of preserving plants, animals against adverse impacts from development. Second issue that I think is really important here is the degradation of aesthetic resources from the project. The fact that the project adjoins this parkland raises serious concerns, because the project would significantly change the character of those aesthetic resources by eliminating the buffer and natural screening between the natural resources and the road, homes, and residential features associated with the project, by removing so much of the vegetation and trees that form a core part of the character and aesthetics of this area. The BME report actually admits that if, if approved, it says, quote, "The project's site may be viewed through both routine day-to-day traffic and recreational uses of the Birdsong Sanctuary Trail." You don't wanna be seeing developments when you're in the middle of parkland or on a trail, and that's why preservation of those aesthetic resources is so important, and indeed is articulated in Seeker, in Town Code, in Comprehensive Plan, as things that need to be preserved. And I wanna, just one more thing I wanna head on real quickly, is the water quality issues, right? So the close proximity of the project to Mill Creek, which drains into Lake Ontario, combined with the known presence of contaminated soils nearby, and the admission that there's a perched water table within three feet of existing or proposed grade, indicates that the, the lead agency should take a hard look at whether the project may impact those water When this project is reviewed cumulatively as a whole under Seeker, it becomes clear that it will create nonconforming property conditions and nonconforming uses and significant adverse environmental impacts that have not been considered and mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. These facts warrant, as, as the board has already observed, doing coordinated review, but it also warrants issuing a positive declaration of environmental significance and requiring preparation of an EIS. For all of these reasons and those stated in our letter, the application should be denied, or significant mitigation measures should be imposed, or changes should be required. If that can't happen, then the project should be denied. Thank you for your time and attention, and if there are any questions from the board, I'll take them, otherwise we'll rest on our papers.
Well, that was a good legal description of it all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would, would you wanna respond to any of those?
We'll, we'll need to see the letter to prepare if the board requires a formal response, which we'll have no problem doing. Just a couple of things, though, I would point out. All uses proposed are conforming uses with the R3 zoning district, there's no dispute in that. A stormwater management facility is not a structure as defined by the Town Code as it relates to zoning and setback within the R3 district, going through the definitions. Stormwater management is also not a nonconforming use or a non allowable use. Stormwater management is required by the Victor Town Code and by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The Town of Victor Code has their drainage ordinance, which we are required to comply to. The stormwater management plan has been prepared in compliance with the Town of Webster's drainage ordinance, the New York State DEC stormwater regulations, as confirmed by the Town Engineer based on their review of the submitted stormwater management design. So all of, without reading it, any reference to the stormwater management plan needing to conform to setback or not being an allowable use are incorrect. And I think the Town Code is very clear on that. With regards to variances, as stated, there are no variances required. That's been vetted through the PRC and through this board. As it relates to the one setback that was identified, the 50-foot setback is provided to Route 250 as required, but the code also allows per 350-12B5A2, corner lots are allowed a 40-foot front setback. That's like we have a 40-foot front setback to the subdivision street, but the 50-foot setback to Route 250 trumps that, for lack of a better term. So those are just things off the top of my head. With regards to Seeker, as we mentioned in the information we provided, going through the thresholds, you, you are able to see the thresholds established through the EAF workbooks established by DEC, that we do not exceed any of the thresholds that go into moderate to large potential impacts that are not mitigated through the design that's been provided. So I'll allow the board to decide what they wanna do in reference to this information. If they request a written response from the applicant, we would do that for you.
Dorothy Fait, 742 Hightower Way. Our town's comprehensive plan is a document that citizens participated in developing and the town adopted, and as such should continue to be utilized as a guiding document for framing Webster's development. I would contend that many of the goals and directions put forth in that document continue to be relevant, and I ask the board to utilize it. Specifically, it recommends that the town planning and zoning boards use such tools as conservation easements and environmental protection overlay districts to protect Webster's natural resources. It also has code under Regulatory Subdivision, Chapter 296, Sections 15 and 16, that address concerns about development's impact on adjacent properties. As we move through the Seeker process, I would assert that the EAF submitted to date is not adequate for this project to move forward. I would ask the board to review the EAF Part One, as I dispute the developer's answers on this document. The developer failed to address Section C, Planning and Zoning, specifically Section C dot two Webster's Comprehensive Plan. Preservation of Open Space was not addressed. Our comprehensive plan included reference to an existing list of properties of value and interest. It was developed in 1973, included 600 parcels. The list was prioritized in 2003. It was recommended that it be updated periodically. This is a living document, and as such, it is an ongoing part of our comprehensive plan. The town has periodically revamped that list, and the current property was included on the updated parcel list of pieces of, parcels of interest. EAF Section E1, E dot one dot C, this property is currently utilized by members of the community as evidenced by the numerous unofficial trails throughout those five acres. Section E dot two dot H, water bodies adjoin the property. Mill Creek flows close to the property, and according to BME Engineering Report of 513, page six, the stormwater flow traveling to Mill Creek is documented. Section D dot one dot C indicates that the project should be 12 months. I believe that this is, that this form should include an estimate of the time before all sites are built out. This would mean a considerable amount of time of ongoing disturbance to citizens who use a Birdsong Trail and animals that use it as habitat. Secondly, as I review the updated site plan, it concerns me that the developer's tree senses saves too few trees for preservation, personal opinion. My question, also it appears that the area determined to be the roadway is marked to be filled to its point of highest elevation. And my question is, will the Birdsong Trail be lower than this proposed road?
Okay, Mrs. Fait, okay, we'd like you to do, that's three minutes, that's it. Take your document, and if you wanna present it to the board, we'll put it in the file with, with the papers.
My other request, though, is that minutes be amended from, you accepted, you accepted minutes, you approved minutes, in which, in which the, there was a document in those minutes that said that the board had already made a determination, that...
Okay, if you've got that on paperwork, just, just please leave it with the secretary.
But the minutes need to be amended, because there is a Seeker determination of, of non-determination in, in those minutes.
Okay, thanks. If you wanna leave that with Catherine, you can leave it, she can put it in the file. Okay. All right, we've, this project has been in here forever. In all my years here, I've never seen a project with just eight houses take so damn long to get approved. This is a very simple operation, and I'm getting the picture that people just don't want it. That's the bottom line of this thing. I'm sorry to say, I don't wanna be crass on this thing again, but that's what the bottom line of this is. People are just pissed off because there's houses going there. There's a couple of people in here that wrote letters. There are houses that don't even have grass growing on them yet, and they're bitching about this project going in. You know that, are you aware of that? Their lots are smaller than these lots are. And in all my years here, my forty-some years on this board, I have never seen such resistance to something like this. And if there's something to be opposed to, I'll be the first one to go into your team. And I see none of that here, none of it. This is bull. This applicant has gone through hoops every which way for eight stinking houses. It's an approved site, you can tell me what you want about the, the code, you can tell me about the, anything you'd like about this thing, but you know what, in reality, it meets everything that's in this Town Code. And this has been gone through, the attorneys have reviewed it, whatever you wanna do after this, God bless you, but I'm ready to just move forward with this thing. And that's it. If Derek is willing to do a Seeker on this?
The board has not completed.
We're not talking anymore, okay? Please?
The board has not completed R2 and 3, and it's the EAF.
Ma'am? All right, let me do it this way. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you. Enough is enough. Everybody has become an expert. We've got engineers, we've got attorneys, everybody looking into this. So this has been research, this is, we're doing no different than any project getting its full required view from everybody, and that's what this has been gone through. If you wanna do a, I'm, we're gonna move forward with it, but you have to do a Seeker first.
What we'll do is, we do have, we did complete a coordinated review. We have a list, we contacted involved and interested agencies as required by Seeker. We worked with all those agencies, none of them had any significant comments about this project.
None of the EAs do.
None of the involved or interested agencies provided comments to this board regarding the project that had any kind of impact on the decision. We also have before us a Part Two of the Environmental Assessment Form, and we will go through this. As a board, we all have copies of the form that was completed, and I think it's worthwhile going through. Part number one, this addresses impacts on land. In this document, the Part Two, it does follow step by step through the Part One Assessment Form. This is just additional information that minds of being requested and filled out. The general response to the impact on land, which is proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of land, the surface of the proposed site, so it's a construction of a subdivision, so obviously it does have impact on land. They are, do work on it. When you look at the items that are listed on under Part Two, it discusses things about, you know, where the land may be within three feet of the water table, if there's slopes greater than 15%, if there's any construction in bedrock or exposed areas. Proposed action may involve excavation or removal of more than 100 tons of natural material, involves construction and continues for more than a year or in multiple phases. The proposed action may include erosion, which is physical disturbance of vegetation. So all of these items listed underneath Number One on the Part Two of the Environmental Assessment Form, there is no or small impact may occur for this particular project. All the items on here are addressed by the normal required construction mitigation programs for stormwater runoff and generally accepted construction techniques. So there's no or small impact on those parcels. Unless anybody else on the board has an objection to that. Impact on geological features, there's no specific geological features on this parcel. So the answer is impact on geological features is no, so there's no impact on that. Impact on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. This includes streams, rivers, or ponds. So the overall answer to that is yes. But within the, the underlying items, is it gonna create a new, new water body? No or small impact, and there's a dry stormwater retention pond, so it's not creating new water bodies. Is it gonna decrease 10% or more of 10 acres increase and decrease the surface area of water body? No. Is a proposed action gonna involve dredging? There's no dredging on this project. Is a proposed action gonna involve construction and joining freshwater tidal wetlands? No. Is a proposed action gonna create turbidie and turbidie water? Is a proposed action going to create turbidity and turbid water? There are construction management practices that are put in place for all construction sites that helps prevent stormwater runoff from the site, so no. Proposed action may include construction or one more intakes or withdrawal of water. It's not the type of project, so no. Proposed action may construct outfalls and discharges of wastewater to surface water. It doesn't have any wastewater discharges, we're tying into the public sewer system for sanitary systems. May cause erosion, you know, again, that is covered by the routine practices of construction. There's stormwater management plans are put in place throughout the project and following the project for maintenance of the stormwater detention pond. Is it going to affect the water quality? Involve applications of pesticides or herbicides? Proposed action may require construction of new or expanding existing wastewater treatment facilities. The answer to all those items are no. So number two impacts on surface water, while the overall arcing thing is yes, everything underneath there is no or small impact on the parcel. Impact on groundwater. There's no impact on groundwater as defined in the items on Part 2 of the environmental assessment form. We're not installing wells, that type of process on the process. We don't put in wells for these, these are all tying into the, one of county water authority. It's also tying into the Town of Webster sanitary sewer system, so it doesn't have any impact on groundwater. Impact on flooding. The answer to that is no, the project's just not located in a 100-year or 500-year flood point, so there's no impact on flooding from the project. Impacts on air quality. The overarching answer on this is yes, but the underlying items are all no or small impact. These items tend to deal with federal air emissions requiring permits, that doesn't apply to this project. You know, 10 tons or more a year designated in hazardous air pollution, that doesn't apply to this project. Proposed action may require state registration for emission sources, that doesn't apply to this project either, it's all residential housing. The proposed action may reach 50 percent of any thresholds of items A through C, and it doesn't reach that threshold either, so no or small impact. The proposed action may result in a combination of thermal treatment or more than one ton of refuge per, per year, combustible thermal units, no, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't generate thermal combustible units. The only emissions that may occur during the project is typical emissions associated with construction activities and vehicles, no different than driving your car up and down the road each day, so it's no to small impact on it. Item number seven on the, on the form deals with impacts on plants and animal. The overall, overarching answer on that thing is no. Items underneath this thing do, they talk about, you know, loss of, loss of population for threatened or endangered species, reduction or degradation of habitat for any kind of rare or threatened species. Proposed action may cause reduction in population and loss of individuals, species of concern. Proposed action may result in reduction in degradation of habitat used by species of special concern. None of those types of species were identified associated with this parcel, so the overall answer on that is no. Item A, the impact on agricultural resources. Straight answer on that is no, it's not an agricultural property, it has not been used for agriculture, it's not in an agricultural district, so there's no impact on agricultural Impact on aesthetic resources. So the overall answer on number nine is yes. Is it going to be visually from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic areas? It's not officially designated as any of those areas, so no. Proposed action may result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. Again, there is no officially designated scenic view adjacent to this parcel. Proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonably, screened by foliage, or year-round. There isn't really a public accessible vantage points for this parcel. You have the trail going by, I see a response to that, but the overall impact is no or small impact. It doesn't have a significant impact of people walking through the trail that's 100 feet away from the buildings, or even from the lot itself. The proposed action may cause the disminishment of public enjoyment or appreciation of designated aesthetic resource, so it's no or small impact. Yes, it is adjacent to the birdsong trail, but the trail runs through the middle of the existing right-of-way, and it's not adjacent to the efficiency of, the actual development. The right-of-way is, but the trail that's being used is not. There are similar projects visible, similar projects visible within the following distances, half-mile, mile and a half, three quarters of a mile. So there are other developments along the birdsong trail that have the exact same viewing that you can see from the trail that this project would have, so it's no small impact on the project. So overall, while impacts on aesthetic resources may be yes, when you look at the individual items underneath, it's, the real answer is no or small impact may occur. Impact on historic or archaeological resources. None of those items were identified in the area. There's nothing on the particular property that's associated with New York State Department of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, nothing on the shipo sites, so the overall answer on that is also no. Impact on open space and recreation. That's item number 11. So the answer, the overall answer to that is no. There is no impact on open space or recreation. This is an individual parcel that is in a residentially zoned area. Proposed action may result in impairment in natural functions of ecosystems, doesn't apply. Proposed action may result in current or future recreational resources, not identified, doesn't apply. The proposed action may eliminate open space and recreation resources in an area with such few resources. We have multiple resources for open space within the town. The proposed action may result in a loss of area now used formally or by community as open space resources. This is private property adjacent to a public trail. It is not community or open resource. Impact on critical environmental areas. There are no identified critical environmental areas adjacent to the site, so the answer to that is no. Impact on transportation. Will result in an existing change in transportation systems. The answer to that is no. We have common feedback from the highway department, the, this is state highway, that didn't indicate that there was going to be an impact of eight houses on traffic on Route Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in use of energy, any form of energy. The overall answer to that is no. There isn't, it's a small development of just eight houses, it's, it doesn't have an overall impact on energy use for the area. Impact on noise, odor, and light. Overall answer on that is yes. Underlying items, this, you know, may produce sounds above established noise levels. The items for that is no or, or small impact. The noise levels there would only be associated with during construction and then once completed, just usual noises associated with residential use, nothing beyond that. Is there any blasting? There's no blasting associated with this project. It's going to be, proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one, you know, no odors from the site even. See, is it going to result in lights shining into neighboring properties, you know, creating skyglow brightness? The overall, the answer to those are no, too. You have residential properties, they have lights on them, the, the expectation is that the houses, when they glow up, that those buildings are in conformance with the town's lighting codes. There are no streetlights on this, on the, in the project, no lights billage into adjacent areas. So overall, for item number 15, no or small impact on the property. Impact on human health. Overall answer to that is no. You know, those items, too, they primarily deal with, proposed, item number 16, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Answer is no. There hasn't been anything identified on the property or adjacent to the property that sort of been impacted, so no. Consistency with, consistency, consistency, sorry, with community plans. So number 17, while the title is consistency with community plans, the underlying description is proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Overall answer to that is no. It is consistent with land use plans. It is, it is in a R3 zone district, it's a residential project proposed in a residential district, so it's consistent with the land use plans for that particular parcel. Consistency with community character. Proposed ad is number 18. Proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character, and the overall answer to that is also no. This is a residential property adjacent to other residential properties, so it's consistent with the residential character of this particular area. So for all items 18 on this, there have not been any items that are identified as no, or, all the items are, say, have been identified as no or small impact it may occur on the property.
As one point of order, you had mentioned the coordinated review was completed. Did that include the zoning board of bills?
All the involved and...
No, because it didn't need variance.
Interested agencies.
Yes, the zoning board was not involved because there were no required variances associated with the plans.
Okay, so the zoning board was not involved, thank you.
That's right, because no variances were required.
So that's all of Part 2.
Okay.
I know the rest of the board has had a chance to review these things, too, unless there's any, was there any questions or discussions we could talk about?
You, you gave the highlights of them all, but again, BME addressed everyone in detail in several pages here. Everyone with these 18 items is addressed in detail.
I'd like to point out that while BME did go through and do a, a very thorough job of going through the individual items with, for Part 2, that the completion list is based on our interpretation of the environmental assessment of the property, relying on information provided not only by BME, but also by the other involved agencies in the property, in the project that may have involved comments, such as, you know, the Town of Webster Conservation Board that gave concept review comments for this regarding the project. And so, the conclusions reached on the Part 2 form are those of the conclusions of the board, with reliance and information provided by others.
Yep.
But not dictated by others. So that being said...
Yep.
One more point of order, I would just ask that the board not make the decision until all members have had a chance to review and complete record. And I observed that earlier this evening, the board members completed it and not, and not given any reading of the secret.
Yep, we've got the letter. You spoke, we heard what you had to say. I believe, my opinion, my opinion, that what, what Derek just read entailed everything, everything, everything that was asked for by all your clients, your associates here, whoever, and I think with that, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with this project. Simple as that. There's never been one that's been as lengthy with such a minimal impact on environment, the town, highways, anything. Do you want to say? With that, I'd suggest, go ahead, we, we have prepared a determination for seeker. If you want to do it, Derek? I have to go with what we've got, I mean, I don't know what's in this letter. We can read it, we can read it later, they can, they can move forward with whatever plan they have, but in my opinion, this firm has covered everything between the attorneys and the engineers, and I am prepared to move forward with this project. Simple as that.
Mr. Chairman, the New York State boards have said that when boards make decisions based on the last and complete record, that that's arbitrary and capricious as a matter of law. I would just ask your attorney to maybe take a look at that before you guys do anything that would end you up in hot water. No one wants that.
I would note that, Mr. Zodlin, this is the first time I'm seeing a 20-page report, I don't know what it was actually received, if it was received.
It was not received by the town at all.
It was submitted yesterday.
The town was closed yesterday, I don't know how you submitted it, but...
There you go.
It was submitted via email.
To who?
To who? The town was closed.
Via email?
Well, I could tell you that I get those emails, and I did not receive your letter, so I'll put that on the record. I did not receive a letter.
I'd be happy to send it to the rest of the town.
I would love to see it.
Can we exchange the mail that morning?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Zodlin.
Yep.
I would add that based on your presentation, and what I have skimmed through this, this letter at this meeting, that our Part 2 review of the entire project has addressed all of your concerns that you raised in that letter.
And I believe some of, the engineer clarified some of the setbacks he thought were an error. It is 40-foot setback at a corner, so he was right again.
If we take a look at the town code provision, it says that it's 50 foot from major highways, so...
Right, and Route 250 is the major highway. Sage Forest Drive is a town road, it would not be considered a major highway.
Corner lots have two front yards.
We do have 50 feet off the state highway.
It, it, but, but the side road is not a major road.
No, but, uh, corner lots are considered to have two front yards, and so that...
We understand.
...a front yard.
Regardless.
Yeah, I know, but let's, we'll do that, let's do that.
Yeah, I don't think we should get into debating interpretation of our code.
Mr. Zodlin.
I don't have anything to add, I'll move forward to proceed.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, the only thing I would say about, the fact of the matter is, this board has taken a hard look at this application.
Yeah, for sure.
I think this evening represents our fifth or sixth public hearing before this board. We have received input from the public, input from involved and interested agencies, input from town, input from town staff, and the board itself. This plan has gone through several iterations of submissions of information back, responding to every comment that this board deemed necessary for us to respond to. So while on one hand, we could say we've been here a year, the fact of the matter is that epitomizes the fact that this has, this board has taken a hard look at all of the issues. All of the information has been provided to you in a timely fashion, and when not, this board has, you know, delayed action or delayed means until you, you've had time. Coming here this evening is the culmination of all that effort and, and application, so that's all I would add.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Derek, why don't you go ahead and move forward if you want?
So I have a seeker determination of significance or resolution, whereas the Town of... Whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board here and referred to as the Planning Board is considered in a subdivision and site plan to develop a new public right of way and six hundred and ten plus or minus feet of roadway extension from Webster Road, New York State Route two fifty. And a proposed subdivision consisting of eight single family residential lots and one lot to be dedicated to the Town of Webster for the ownership and maintenance of a proposed stormwater management facility located on tax back, sorry, tax map number zero six five point one zero, one eight zero dash one dash zero two seven in the Town of Webster, Monroe County, New York. And this describes in the site plans dated May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, last revised October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. And all other relevant information submitted as of tonight's meeting on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, the current application. And whereas the planning board has determined that above action is a type one action pursuant to part six seventeen of state environmental quality review regulations and the New York State Department of Health requirements for realty subdivisions. And whereas the planning board determined that the action is to be subject to a coordinated review and approved by other involved agencies under Seeker and approval by other involved agencies under Seeker. And whereas the planning board has been designated lead agency under the provisions of part six seventeen point six three and four of Article eight of the state environmental conservation law. And whereas the planning board has given consideration to the comments provided by the individual agencies and interested agencies at tonight's meeting and who have submitted documents prior to the meeting. And whereas the planning board has completed its review of parts two and part three of the full environmental assessment form. And whereas the planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance as set forth in section six seventeen point seven C of Seeker regulations and the information contained in parts one, two, and three of the full environmental assessment form. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby accepts the findings contained in the parts two and three of the full environmental assessment forms and directs the planning board chairman to sign and date the full environmental assessment form part three. Be it further resolved based on the information analysis above, the supporting documentation referenced above, and for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, impacts and will not require an environmental impact statement. Be it further resolved that the planning board does hereby make the determination of non-significance on the proposed development and that the planning board chairman is hereby directed to sign the full environmental assessment form part three and issue a negative declaration as evidence of the planning board's determination. I also have attached to the resolution, the, the list of determination of significance, notice of determination of non-significance. Uh, traditionally, we just incorporate this by reference.
Good.
If that's acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do that instead of reading through the whole list again. Okay. And so that's the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion for the determination for the significance of Seeker, you need a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, we have a second, I'll call you.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Pishani?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltman?
Aye.
Okay, with that done, we have to do a motion for preliminary and a separate one for final. As you always say, you had to do two. Yeah. So I will make a motion for a preliminary, preliminary approval for the Birdsong, the Conover Cove subdivision. And we'll base that on, we do have some PRC comments, and I believe you did have those and those were addressed. Uh, make it subject to PRC comments. A letter of credit is posted with the Town of Webster for the project. Uh, this is subject to any of the conservation board's minutes where the review of it. Uh, subject to Monroe County Water Authority, uh, subject to a determination of the zoning board for required, there were no variances requested, so we don't need that. Address any land to be conveyed to the town, which would be the drainage section in there. Uh, all improvements shall be constructed in accordance with the specifications of the Town of Webster. All roadwork, uh, construction is to be in accordance with specifications and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Preserve all the mature trees on the site where possible and mark, and these were published in their environmental impact statement and shows on their drawings where the trees are being preserved. Uh, let's see. Let's see, you have to comply with all requirements of state, county, town agency. Applicant is addressed drainage, lighting, signage, landscape, no signage, we haven't done anything with signage. Landscaping, buffering, burning, and snow storage. Okay, we've covered that, covered that well for snow storage included. Uh, the landscape, hardscape site accessories and associated finished grade design for the development is prepared by a licensed landscape architect. And the final landscape plan shall bear the seal and signature of the landscape architect. And approvals are subject to drawing number, what is that drawing number, can you see it? Yeah, we've had so many of them.
Two nine one zero dash.
Yeah, one. Two nine one zero. Okay. And this project has complied to all the town codes. One thing I would like to put in there is, um, addition to it is, if, if there's a proposal to sell any lots to individual developers, that there's unity in the development. In other words, elevations are to be maintained, finished floor elevations, whatever that drawing shows, that's what it has to be. Somebody isn't going to just go down halfway and raise the house and that kind of thing. So I'd want to see that in the, uh, in your final drawings, a note. Okay? All right, I guess with that, that I'd call that a preliminary approval. You need a second?
Second.
Mr. Pishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltman?
Aye.
All right, for final approval. We've received all the paperwork, we've gone through everything on this subject. Make it subject again to the PRC comments. Uh, make it subject to the parks and recreation fees, which would be determined by the town board. And make that subject to all preliminary approval conditions. And, uh, make it, uh, to all applicable governmental fees. And subject to the Department of Public Works approvals. And significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on, what is this, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The conditions of preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover sheet of the approved drawings, final design. The engineers for the proposed project shall, uh, provide a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution and final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. And a letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection, certification inspection of the site. All stormwater facilities are to be constructed first, that's all your drainage swales and so on. Uh, all downspouts connected to the storm sewer. And make that subject to the resolution of the final approved minutes. And approvals are subject to the drawing number again, twenty, whatever that was, twenty-nine ten. And subject to re, and that was, that would be it? That's the resolution for final approval.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Pishani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltman?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Okay, with that, this project is closed. Thanks for coming in and sorry for some that, you know, didn't work out the way everybody wanted, but we did what we have to do. And I'm going to call for a five minute recess here, okay? Good explanation, you did well.
Mr. Dogwood. I'm motioning for a recess.
Will we convene and get the meeting going again, okay?
First scheduled matter on tonight's agenda, detached garage replacement located at 786 Webster Road. The applicant, Thomas Dobbins, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval and a public hearing associated with the demolition of an existing garage and shed.
Good evening, um, Tom Dobbins.
To the replacement of the construction of a new twenty-two by thirty-six-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot detached garage structure on a zero-point-two-five-acre parcel located in an R-three single-family residential district under sections two sixty-nine dash eleven and three fifty dash thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Can you just piece up a little closer so we can hear?
It's all right, she'll interpret for me. I've got really bad hearing, God.
Oh, that's okay. Can you hear us? Okay?
We'll keep it short. Um, we've got zoning approval for this. We're moving the garage over three feet off the property line and making sure that it's six feet back from the house.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a number of the properties in the area have larger garages than the five-hundred square feet that you're asking for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, presently, we can't really move it over much further because there's a handicap ramp there. Um, if you look at the, uh, the picture there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we presently build wheelchairs for, um, handicapped children. We've done about three thousand out so far. Um, the garage is in poor repair. It doesn't really have a good foundation under it. It's been shored up and that, and, um, just need some more storage space.
So the new garage is twenty-two foot by thirty foot, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you use this for doing your, what your work that you do?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't see any issues with it. You see your variances already. Got your variances, right?
Variances?
Yes. Okay.
Anybody any concerns with this?
No.
No?
No.
I'm sure you're gonna make it to match the house, similar to what the house is?
Uh, it's gonna be, um, a whole barn-type structure.
Okay.
Um, and it'll be in keeping with the, with the house.
Okay, so color-wise, you get it to match so much?
We're gonna use the existing garage door on the new building as long as everything lines up as the old garage door.
Okay.
Yeah, the garage door is about the only thing that works well on it.
Garage door is worth more than the whole garage, right?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was built back probably in the fifties. House dates back, there, there was no, um, tape location map for the property. We did a tape location map, so the town has one now.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anybody? Derek, you okay with it?
I'm good.
Uh, I did provide a number of properties in the area that have larger...
Let me, let me tell you a little something. I learned a long time ago, once you sell it, don't buy it back. I got your message. You're going good so far. I learned that a long time ago. We're all okay with this?
All right.
Derek, can I go ahead and move forward?
A resolution. Town of Webster planning board considered request by Thomas Dobbins to demolish an existing detached garage and shed and construct a new twenty-two by thirty-six-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot detached garage structure on a zero-point-two-five-acre parcel having SBL number zero-six-five point one-eight dash one dash nine, located at seven-eighty-six Webster Road in an R-three single-family residential district. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type-two action under section six-seventeen point five C two of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion, you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good. Uh, so I'm gonna make a motion for approval for the, uh, twenty-two-foot, the thirty-foot garage. Okay, I'll make a motion for a twenty-two-by-thirty-foot garage located at, what's that, seven-eighty-six, the address? Seven-eighty-six?
Yep.
Webster Road is presented, and, uh, the applicant has received all variances, uh, from the ZBA. Uh, the building will be constructed, uh, pole barn style with the same type garage door in the front, right?
Yes, sir.
And color is gonna match, basically match the house.
Right.
Okay, that would be a motion.
Second.
Well, we can just call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good. You're all set.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Do we do a final?
Yes.
You have significant construction? What's that? Significant construction? Yes. Okay.
Second item on tonight's agenda, electric vehicle charging stations located at ten-fifty-eight Ridge Road. Applicant Benny Torrechi is requesting preliminary final site plan approval on a public hearing associated with the installation of four Level Three DCFC electric vehicle charging stations within Town Center Plaza on a fifteen-point-fourteen-acre parcel located in a high-intensity commercial district under sections two sixty-nine dash eleven and three fifty dash nineteen of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, Benny Torrechi, PISO's lead, uh, design engineer, and I'm here with Ginger Bugow, uh, charge point representative. And, uh, as we described, we're looking to put in four, um, four chargers. Uh, the entire system will consist of a utility transformer, a switchboard, two cabinets to serve the four chargers and the four chargers themselves. Uh, bollards will be on the four chargers as listed in the drawings, and bollards, uh, covering the entire transformer surroundings. Uh, this particular section doesn't interrupt any of the existing landscaping, but it is also utilized in a manner that it doesn't make it, um, terribly obvious that they're there, so it's...
Where are these located? I see your drawing, but I don't know where it's at.
Yeah. It's, uh, in the back portion of the parking lot. Um, so in most cases, they ask us to put up greenery. Fortunately, in that space, we can use it to our advantage here.
Okay.
Um, if signage, uh, signage is required elsewhere to kind of let people know that is where the chargers are located, we can do that. Um, but generally, that's the entirety of the, the project we're seeking to install.
Okay. Is there enough lighting around there at night, so if people want to use it, they, they'll be well, well lit?
Yes, it's an excellent question. So we have, uh, two locations from existing lighting. If additional lighting is required, we can certainly put one more pole in just to, um, add to the lighting, but there is sufficient lighting that exists there now.
All right, I don't see it as being an issue, is just that the core development's good with the location. Now, how do you, do you have to run electric out there, or?
Yes, we do. So, again, if, uh, it's hard to see, but if you pull up a Google Map, uh, Maps image, there's an existing transformer just on the other side of the, uh, the road that's there.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yes, well, we, we work with RGE who are willing to pull off an extra set for us off of that transformer that feeds our location. Uh, we'd be separate metered, so they don't have an issue with that, and we'd be the only people on, uh, or the only, uh, tenant on that.
Josh, you're pretty good with it.
Yeah. Took me a couple times to figure out where it was.
Yeah, see that, man, you zipped right into it. Very good. All right, um, anybody any concerns on this?
None.
You good with it? John? Is there a rate with it?
I was wondering where it was too, there.
Yeah, no, I couldn't either, 'cause then the map, um, the drawing we have, it just shows, shows the location, but I don't know what else. You wanna do a secret?
Uh, just kind of one quick question I had with this.
Yeah, go ahead.
These electrical charging stations, the whole things are new.
Yep.
So they're not specifically named in the town code? So I guess my question is, would we as a board consider it more or less equivalent to a gasoline charging station, like a gas station? From perspective of providing fuel to a vehicle, in this case, electricity? 'Cause that makes it so it's covered underneath the zoning for the property. 'Cause right now, there, when you look at the zoning for each of the parcels that we have, for the different classes we have,
electrical substation or electrical charging stations aren't addressed.
The closest thing which is allowed in this area is a gasoline station.
Didn't we put recently at, uh...
Marina Dodge.
Yeah, Marina. Yeah, we did approve one there.
Yeah, similar, kind of similar thing, just making sure that we as a board consider it equivalent to somewhere to use in the area, 'cause that's one thing that's...
Yeah, it's not in the code.
Says on the code if we consider it equivalent, and it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it.
So also because it's so new, it's also winds up being an unlisted action because it's not listed.
Yep.
Surprisingly, right now, in the current SEAKER documents, it's not anything. It was the last update they had. I was surprised that they didn't do it. They didn't. Uh, motion for unlisted action, negative declaration. Town of Webster planning board is considered a request by Benny Torrechi?
That's pretty good. You're totally in line.
He'll take it.
To install four Level Three DCFE electric charging stations within the Town Center Plaza on a fifteen-point-one-four-acre parcel having SBL number zero-seven-nine point one-six dash one dash two-point-one-one, located at one-zero-five-eight Ridge Road in a high-intensity commercial district. The planning board determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action. The planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to part six-seventeen point six B four of SEAKER, and whether it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance, the planning board therefore designated itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board is considered, has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance as set forth in part six-seventeen point seven C one of SEAKER, and has one, considered the information contained in the short environmental assessment form, part one, dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Number two, considered public comments directed towards the planning board during the public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. And number three, completed parts two and three in the environmental assessment form, and those forms are completed. Now therefore be resolved that the town of Webster planning board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth from the attached notice of determination and non-significance. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster planning board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the town of Webster planning board's responsibilities as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster planning board, based on the information and analysis above, the reference supporting documentation and discussions of the action by the town of Webster planning board as documented by these minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster planning board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster planning board, based on the above reasons, issues, and negative declaration is evidence of its determination.
Okay, that'd be a motion, you need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Before we get to the approval, we, this is a public hearing, I don't think you open it to the public hearing. Is it listed as a public hearing? Okay, is there anyone here wishing to come in on this, or no? Nobody? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. That was easy. That's kind of like...
Thank you very much.
No, no, we're not done.
Oh.
That was just, that was just for the first part.
Ah.
That was just SEAKER, so we gotta get a motion. Somebody want to make a motion for approval? Is this, uh, preliminary file, or?
Do we have two?
It's listed as...
Two?
Preliminary file, so it's listed as preliminary and file. So we have to make two motions. So somebody want to make a motion for preliminary? Go ahead, John. I'll give it a shot here and give a little break. I'll make a motion for the electrical, you know, electrical vehicle charging stations located at, uh, ten-fifty-eight Ridge Road, uh, subject to PRC comments, uh... Seeing all this, and I know the variances required. I don't see anything else on here that, uh... As presented? As presented. Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a final approval for, uh, the charging station located at ten-fifty-eight Ridge Road, uh, subject to preliminary approval conditions, uh, subject to governmental fees. Uh, significant constructions shall occur within one year as deemed by the board to expire on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. And, uh, I think that's, uh, subject to the resolution of the final approval minutes. Second. That's good. You need a, you gotta, you gotta a motion, you need a second?
Who's got a second?
Oh, he did, I need a little more second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so I guess you're all set now.
Okay. Thank you, board, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
The third scheduled item on tonight's agenda, detached pole barn garage located at seven-fifty-one Maple Drive. Applicant Ray Schlegel is requesting preliminary final site plan approval with a public hearing associated with the construction of a twenty-two by twenty-eight six-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot detached pole barn garage on a zero-point-two-five-acre parcel located in an R-three single-family residential district under section two-sixty-nine dash eleven and three-five-zero dash thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. Schlegel?
Yes.
So what are you doing? You're building a garage?
Garage.
Yep. Anything you want to tell us about it?
Twenty-four by twenty-eight with ten-foot walls. And you should have, uh, the color of it to match the house.
Mm-hmm. You can pass those around. These are the colors, I want to see it. He's got the colors matching.
It's gonna, it's gonna be right on the side of the house?
You guys want to... Is that gonna be on the side of the house?
Could it be on the, uh, north side, yes.
Did you say it's a twenty-four by twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause here it's got twenty-two by twenty-eight.
Twenty-four by twenty-eight.
Does that matter, if he's off dimensions?
No, no, he's got it marked down there, so this is twenty-four by twenty-eight, he's showing that. It was originally thirty, was it?
Originally, I knocked it down to twenty-eight.
Yeah, okay. And the location doesn't conform for an accessory building, but I guess you received the variances on it, right? Got variances, so you're all set with that?
Yes, yeah, he got several variance approvals, yeah.
Okay. All right, and what, uh, what's in the front there, Ray? You, you've got like a tree or something?
I beg your pardon?
There's a tree, yeah, there's a pine tree. Man, Josh, you're good with this thing. Yeah.
That's where it's gonna go, yes.
Okay. And what's the front? Is front just, just metal? Are you putting anything on it, anything decorative, or?
Uh, it's gonna be a garage door on it.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's always good to have a code.
It's gonna be four foot off the driveway.
Yeah, all right. All right, anybody any questions, or?
No.
Nope.
Is there any electricity or water or, uh, heat out there?
No heat.
Just electricity and water?
It's gonna be a garage.
It'll be a garage, okay.
So you can use it for storage and stuff, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody any questions or concerns? You guys are okay with that?
Could have a public hearing. Public hearing.
Yes, public hearing, that's right, too. Anybody want to speak in regard to this? Nobody? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Thanks for reminding me, I'm just rushing here. Um, go ahead, do a secret, Sharon.
The town of Webster planning board considered a request by applicant Ray Schlegel to construct a twenty-four by twenty-eight detached pole barn garage on a zero-point-two-five-acre parcel having SBL number zero-six-three point one-nine dash one dash nine point one, located at seven-five-one Maple Drive in an R-three single-family residential district. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type-two action under section six-seventeen point five C two, I'm sorry, this is a new building, correct? So it's, since it actually...
Yes.
Five C nine of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're good. Want to, may somebody make a motion for approval, preliminary approval? I guess I can try it again. Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, uh, for, uh, Ray Schlegel for, uh, yeah, requesting a, uh, a, uh, to build a pole barn garage at seven-fifty-one Maple Drive, detached pole barn, but twenty-eight by twenty-eight, uh, subject to PRC comments, uh... He's obtained all the necessary variances. Shall be constructed according to specifications of the town of Webster. All site, all site work is to complete and with the standards of the town of Webster. Variants is depicted, all, and proceeds, okay, and that's, I think that's the motion as presented there.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a, the final approval for Ray Schlegel for the detached pole barn garage located at seven-fifty-one, uh, Maple Drive, subject, no, no, preliminary, subject to preliminary approval conditions. Significant constructions shall be, occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. The condition of approval depicted on the final site plans to have credit, and subject to the final resolution of the, uh, final minute, yeah, subject resolution of final approval minutes. There's something else I was gonna, did I miss something? Construction in the year?
Yeah, I did that, yeah.
You got that? Okay, that's it then.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we have a motion and you need a second?
Second.
Need a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I guess we're good. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda, Grocery Outlet located at nine-eighty Ridge Road. The applicant Cindy Callahan Reenberg Pharaoh is requesting preliminary site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the interior fit-out of a new grocery store in Webster Plaza, including minor exterior changes on a seventeen-point-oh-three-acre parcel located in a high-intensity commercial district under sections two-sixty-nine dash eleven and three fifty dash nineteen of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Ivan Hina. Uh, I work for Greenberg Pharaoh, who's the architect for Grocery Outlet. Uh, I could give a brief description of Grocery Outlet. Uh, they're a bargain market, which is a full-service grocery store, which offers the very best produce, meat and organic products. They carry, uh, NASH, which is an abbreviation for natural, organic, specialty, and healthy discounted food. Uh, the project includes a full... The project includes a full tenant build out for the interior. The existing space, from our understanding, has been empty for 10 plus years. All interior construction and finishes will be brand new. And we're doing a few minor exterior improvements, which include new automatic sliding entry doors with protective bollards, new overhead roll up door for on grade receiving, a new metal canopy over that roll up door, and painting of the exterior as we show on the exterior elevations. I can answer any questions about the drawings.
You're gonna have a sign on the building?
Yes, however, that's going to be submitted separately by Grocery Outlet signage vendor. It's not included as part of this application.
Okay. Now, the, one of the issues in past years is because of it being in that corner is parking is, how do you designate the parking in there? Is there like, you know, that color me thing there? Do they get designated parking spots or any, you know, maybe?
So, we're not proposing to make any changes to the square footage of the existing tenant space, so, you know, whatever parking is already there is assumed to be enough. I will say that all the loading will be at the back of the building. We're not gonna cause any further congestion due to that. And we don't believe it's be an issue because generally speaking, the Grocery Outlet customers are not occupying the parking lot for a long period of time. The average customer goes in and out of the building fairly quickly.
What is the square footage of the building? I saw it once.
I don't know, it was 20,000 some?
I forgot, I saw it.
For the space, yeah. The space is 20,390.
Is that what it is?
Just the space.
Is there a loading dock in the back of the building for you guys?
Yes, there is a loading dock at the back. It's shown on that site plan. So that's actually the loading dock for the adjacent tenant, which is the, I believe it's a, I forget what it is, but.
Savers. Savers.
Yeah, exactly. Ours is slightly above that. It's, it's, yeah, that's space where you have your mouse over right now. And that's just on grade loading.
Where's the grocery carts gonna be?
So the grocery carts are gonna be located at an exterior car corral that's on the sidewalk. It's shown directly in front of the space.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good point you brought up. Being a confined area, have you looked at anything like Aldi's? I think that is one of the nicest setups, where people put a quarter and get it because this parking lot surely don't want to have carts left out, you know, in the parking lot.
Okay, they don't do that anymore.
They don't?
No.
Really?
Yeah, my wife went shopping there a couple days ago.
Is that right?
It was gone. They don't have the area, at least I didn't see it. They used to have it at the side of the building.
Yeah, yeah. By the front door.
Right, and there's nothing there.
Okay.
People were taking the shopping carts and going to their cars.
I always thought that was a good idea because it minimized the.
Yeah, it would be your cart back.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And then especially with the parking, as your situation, as you mentioned, Augusta wind's gonna blow a shopping cart into the side of a car and scratch it all up, and you're gonna have a lot of upset people.
Now, would they put? What, once people take groceries in a cart, they take it out to their vehicle, where do they do with it then?
So typically they will have some cart corrals in the parking lot spaces.
They'll have a couple spaces.
Yeah, usually it's only a couple. We don't show it on our site plan here, but typically the owners will put that in after the fact, yes.
I think it should be shown where it's gonna be.
Yeah, because I don't know where they're gonna fit this parking lot.
And a couple, it may not suffice. I mean, if you got a, a lot of customers there, you're gonna need more than just two spaces to put a cart in as you're leaving. Because as I said again, you're gonna end up in a situation where cars are gonna get damaged because somebody left a cart out and the wind, gust of wind blew it in the side of the car and scratched it up or did more serious damage.
Yeah, I can, I can say that Grocery Outlet has a very low average of, you know, the amount of money spent per customer. On average, they only spend about $30 per visit, which in some, you know, most spaces wouldn't even require you to, to use a shopping cart. So they typically don't have too many of those cart corrals, and we're hoping it won't be an issue.
Well, if you consider doing like what Whitemans does, you have the tote bags, at least I think that's what my wife carries in when she goes shopping. Instead of having the carts have to carry bags to your car.
People do that anyways.
There's, there's a couple other, there's at least one other location in the county for Grocery Outlets right now, isn't there?
Yeah, there's, they've been developing a lot in the northeast, and I know that we're also doing one in Arandaqua, I believe it's, that's how it's pronounced.
Arandaqua.
Arandaqua, sorry.
And for the other locations, you know, particularly the ones in the county, what do they do with the couch, the carts there?
Like I said, they typically, I think, will have at least, at least two of those cart corrals in the, in the parking lot. But we also do have that one on the sidewalk that we're showing there, which, you know, should be able to fit all the carts necessary for the store.
With this? Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, some people do, but some don't, you know?
The pet store has carts, right?
Yeah. Because I go in there all the time.
All right, well, all right, I think the consideration is to try and see if you can fit a couple of spaces there for the carts, at least one to start with. If you need to have two, you might have to, we don't know.
Okay, yeah.
But something should be there, just, you know, to have, accommodate them. And the others are, and Josh, have you got a picture of that front again? And just, just, yeah. There's not an overhead of it, is there? Or is there? I'm just curious, how big is that sidewalk in the front where they can? In other words, if you put carts, is there still room to negotiate walking? There you go, there you go.
Yeah.
So that would be in that corner there, maybe? I mean, you can't put one over here.
I believe we provided a floor plan that shows it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the area. Yeah. Okay, all right.
Is that fixture plan PDA? It's shown, yep, to the right of the entry.
Uh-huh. There's a door, there's the existing egress door right there. But that area, I suppose, yeah, okay, all right, you've got it figured out, there's room there, just had to lay it out. Okay. Anybody, any other issues? I think that was a good one, was the parking, you know, parking lot.
This is a public hearing too.
Exterior car corral. There's room there, yeah, no issues. All right, um, is there anyone here wishing to speak? You have four against us? I don't want you girls arguing, if you want to come on up, you can. Yes, ma'am? What's that? Wait a minute, what's that? I can't hear you. Oh, okay.
We're here for the next one.
I, I can't hear you.
Can you go back to the actual? Colorful photo.
Oh, the colored photo?
Yeah.
Like that?
No, the, that's.
That one?
Um, is recurring one so that you can get a wheel carrier or a jackhammer?
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Okay, mhm. All right, that's it, we'll close the public hearing. Back up, anybody any concerns with this?
It's a permitted use for the space.
What's that?
It's a permitted use.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
I know, I remember that.
Okay, how far back do I go? You guys remember when Bells was there, when they built the building? Ah, gotcha.
Nope.
That's a long time ago. Anyways, okay. Man, there's no issues with it, it's existing building, building's in good, great shape. And it's good to see the building occupied too.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's a plus for it. All right, go ahead and do it.
So because this part of this project is 20,000 square feet and it's an unlisted action. Town of Webster Planning Board considered a request by applicant Cindy Callahan. She actually works for Greenberg Farrell, right?
Yeah, she works for the same company as we.
It's not a continuation of her name, it's two different names, right? Cindy Callahan with Greenberg Farrell for an interior fit out of the new grocery store for Webster Plaza, including minor exterior changes on a 17.03 acre parcel having SPL number 079.15-1-3.1 located at 980 Ridge Road in a HC High Intensity Commercial District. The planning board determines, determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action. The planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to part 617.6B4 of SECRE, and that is, that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration for the criteria for determining significance set forth in section 617.7C1 of SECRE, and has one, considered the information contained in the short environmental assessment form, part one dated September 18th, 2024, number two, considered comments directed to the planning board during the public hearing on November 12th, 2024, and three, has completed parts two and three of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed project will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of nonsignificance. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for the action. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supporting documentation, and discussions of the action by the town of Webster Planning Board is documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board, therefore makes a determination of nonsignificance, be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of its determination.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Preliminary, you want to make a motion for preliminary?
Yeah, I can make a motion for preliminary for the grocery outlet located at 980 Ridge Road. Applicant Cindy Callahan is requesting a, associated with the interior fit of a new grocery store in Webster Plaza, including minor exterior changes. Subject to the PRC comments, conservation board. I don't think there's any variances required.
Mm-hmm.
All approval minutes shall be constructed according to specifications of the town of Webster. All site workers can be in compliance with the standards of the town of Webster. And that's the motion.
May I put the cart return then? A couple of spaces, a space maybe?
Yeah, a space out in the parking lot there for a cart.
A space?
Yeah.
With potential more may be needed, but a space for the grocery carts?
Okay, all right.
In the parking lot?
All right. There's also gonna be grocery cart return right in front of the store.
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Council?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Malzey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardino?
Aye.
Mr. Kishan?
Aye. Okay, you want to do a final?
Make a final motion for the grocery outlet located at 980 Ridge Road, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to governmental fees. Significant, we have to do significant construction? Yeah, shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on November 12th, 2025. Engineered under credit and subject to the resolution of final approval minutes.
Okay, all, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're good, all right. Okay, you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next application is Cobblestone Place Phase 2 located at 1025 Ravenside Lane. Applicant Ivan Van Epps of Brickwood Management is requesting sketch plan review associated with the construction of a three-story, 47-unit market rate residential apartment building on a 5.0 acre parcel located in a medium-high residential district under section 269-5 of the code of the town of Webster.
Gentlemen.
Good evening, my name's Jake Eldries, I'm with Marathon Engineering, and I'm with Luke Van Epps with Brickwood Management. Oh, oh, you said, sorry. And we're here to present the Cobblestone Phase 2 project. To give you a little background before we jump into it is, it was previously designed by Passaro Associates as a senior two-phase facility. As you can see up on the, on the screen, phase one was completed, or I believe approved by the board around 2015, and as well with phase two, but they, the existing developer was only able to get funding for tax credit purposes for the senior living for phase one. So that is why they have parceled off kind of the two buildings, as you can see, the existing and the proposed, and yeah, thanks, thanks Josh for outlining the, the new, the new property line. So we are now proposing to take that building layout, and we are going to do a three-story, 47-unit apartment complex with, it'll be market rate and the weight restrictions in the, in the new proposed building. Let's see. The variances, just to kind of walk through them, that were approved in 2015. I'll just run through kind of the code as well as the others. So the units, per the town code is eight units per acre. Initially, back in 2015, it was approved for 12 units per acre, and now we are going below that to a 9.4 units per acre. It's a five acre site, just to give a little reference. Parking as well, the code is two spots per unit. And then, back in 2015, it was approved at 1.1 spaces per unit, and we are gonna propose a 1.8 spots per unit. And then, kind of to go back to that property line, that was newly formed, that is going to be a variance that we are gonna need to go to the zoning board for. It's going to be considered a front setback, it's roughly at 17 feet. With that being said, it's very similar to, actually the building we are proposing is in, within reason, the exact same building layout as it was back in 2015, so it's kind of a mirror image across that access road. Stormwater, that was planned for in the Passaro plans back in 2015, so we're just gonna utilize that, send all of our stormwater to that treatment facility. And I believe on our end, that is all I've got. Do you have anything to add at this point?
Yeah, originally, I believe this, this building was approved.
Into the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Originally, this building was approved for a 60-unit, single fam, single bedroom apartments for senior living, and we've reworked it to be a mix of about 80% two bedrooms and 20% one bedrooms, and that's brought the unit count down to 47. And, you know, as far as the parking issue, there's also in the building on the first level.
level, there's also garages as well for some of the units. What's that count again?
Ten.
Ten, yeah, there's ten garages as well to add to the parking, which I don't believe is included in that one point eight count. So that's, that's a little additional parking on top of that as well.
How many parking spots do you have?
I believe it is eighty-four. And then, just per the code, it would be ninety-four and we're proposing, so we're going to be at eighty-four, sorry, eighty-four spaces, plus the ten. Plus the ten within the building.
And what have you, is there any open space, anything?
So, actually what we did compared to the Passer Row plans is we've actually tried to limit the amount of pavement, so on the, it would be the east side, we've kind of bumped back that buffer as well as from the south of the property. Yes, exactly, yes. So those areas will, are, from the two thousand fifteen plans, those have been expanded to have a little bit more green space.
Pictures always look pretty.
And that building is going to complement what is existing.
Now, what did they do on the outside of these? I mean, like, some sort of an amenity, I mean, are benches or tables or anything?
Yeah, we typically, you know, we didn't, we don't really, sorry, we didn't include this in the plans, but we typically put like a gazebo and some picnic table areas. You know, it's, the site's a little limited, but we try to utilize the green space as much as possible. And we usually do that. We're also, we're the construction company, but we're also the management company as well, so we'll be managing this property after the fact, so we typically try to put as many amenities in the space as possible.
Okay, there were, there were a few, where was I seeing the PRC comments here somewhere?
Sure.
Did you see them at all, or have you, have you guys got, there's only a few of them. I don't know if you've got a copy of them?
I did not.
Here, I can give you this and you can take them, you can just address them, there's just a few of them, there's nothing earth shattering, it's under cobblestone. No, that's okay. Yeah.
Yep, so I, I do see that we'll have to expand to the twenty-five foot, or sorry, the twenty-six foot drivelines, I think we're proposing twenty-five, but again, we have good real estate to get that done, that should be no, no issue. And I know during our initial conversation with the town is that the water was brought up on whether that will be private or not, and we'll, we'll work with the water authority to try to have them take over ownership, but if not, we'll have to just do similar what was done, I believe, for phase one, which is hot box and have that piped. And then, as it says here, we, we can work on trying to keep those, or we can get those manholes to remain private. I believe those manholes are going to be sanitary.
Yeah, sure, it's all good, that's all right.
Is this the same owner, is the original existing owner? Two total?
Yeah, that's, that's why the parcel line, that was actually the phasing line for the previous owner and then they just parceled it off.
So what type of arrangements do you have in place for access for using, looks like would be their road to access your development?
So the access would still kind of remain off, I believe it's River, Riverside Lane, or Ravenside, sorry, Ravenside Lane and then we'll have the vehicle, sorry, the emergency vehicle access throughout the entire site, so as you can see, there's kind of a loop road around the building.
Sure, but is Ravenside a private road or is it?
It is a, I believe it is a town, no, private, is it a private road?
So you would have to have some kind of access agreement?
Yeah.
Maintenance agreement?
Yep.
Does anyone know if there's any, when the original project was approved, if there's any kind of restrictions or things that we should be aware of from the original approval that may impact this?
I think we've overcome, the one issue I did discover was, there was some forty or fifty-year agreement that the former, the original developer engaged in with the federal government for the tax credits. And there was some language that it had to be age, age and income restricted for a period of forty or fifty years. So when we brought that to the real estate agent who was marketing the property's attention, they went back to VOA and they provided confirmation that that original agreement had been amended to exclude the remaining lands that never got built upon. So that's the only thing that I was aware of.
Okay. Okay, anything else, anybody?
Is there enough room for snow removal, replace or put snow?
Yes, yep.
Get a lot of green space there.
And then we, we, we're not showing it on here just because it's a sketch in, but we will put AI site for, for garbage and dumpster utility area, or actually, yeah.
I'm always curious when I have these new facilities come up, if you have thought about, or is there, excuse me, is there the option to have a generator for power in case power goes out, especially if this is for people, my age?
I, I know we haven't thought of anything yet, but that's absolutely something that we can, we can look into and see if that's something that we can add to it.
Yeah, I'm sure you've got elevators in these units, three-story, right, yeah, no problem. All right, anything else, anything that's? Do you want us, do you want to talk? Sure, we'll let you talk. You guys live right, right there, right? All right, who has, you want, you want to say something? All right, why don't one of you come up, you probably all have the same, whoever wants to speak, go ahead. Tell us what you want to say.
My name is Mary Randall and I live at ten twenty-three Cobblestone in apartment three zero seven, so I'm up in the bird's nest. There's a lot of, we have a lot of concerns. The concerns are, the, I believe the eldest person in our place is ninety years old and she uses a rollator. A lot of us use canes and rollators to go to our cars. This is going to be family structure, yes? It's a family structure with children. And are they going to have bicycles and skateboards?
They, they might.
Ah, this is a problem. And bicycles. And bicycles and school buses. And that, when you look at, there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of concerns. We get a lot of deliveries, everyday, Amazon is in there, FedEx, all kinds of deliveries, food deliveries.
So your biggest concern is traffic and stuff in there?
Well, we have a lot of concern.
No, wait a minute, can't?
Okay, come on.
One person speaking, that's it.
Talk to me and I'll talk to them. Okay.
You tell them, honey.
No, I've, I've, I've done this sort of thing a lot over the years.
I can tell, you could.
My father was an attorney and my husband was on a board, on a, on a village board, so I, I've, I've done a lot of this. But anyhow, see that first curve, that ninety-degree curve coming in?
Yep.
You can't get a car and there's parking spaces there and people do park there, whether they're visitors or whether they live there. You can't get a FedEx van and a car around that corner at the same time. You even go down to the other end, there's another one. There's a, what is it, the U-Haul place there. So there's another ninety-degree turn there. You can't get a car and a van around that. We have those problems all through that particular area, even on, what is it? Coming, coming in Harmony, Harmony, there's a ninety-degree turn there. You get those big hunk and pickup trucks and all sorts of things and you get people walking, there's kids that walk home from school there. I mean, we've got a lot of traffic in that area and all you're doing here is, again, adding more traffic and it's, it's going to cause a lot of unhappy people in there because of being elderly. We're used to being quiet. I live in the front side of Ravenside, up on the third floor. I get to see the deer and, and Hank and Millie, the gophers and.
Okay, we think we got the picture of what you're talking about.
But we've got a lot of issues in there. How are these going to be resolved, gentlemen?
We'll, we'll have them, ma'am?
Yeah.
Mary, we'll, we'll have them address all that stuff. This is just the beginning of it here, so they've got, they'll redesign, they'll change things, there's going to be?
Right, it's just food for thought.
This is just a sketch of what they're proposing, okay?
It's a very pretty building, but I think it's going to be a.
See, you may be moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, no, we've got to, we've got to quit, we've got to end now, because if we get, if we go over ten o'clock, they'll tow our cars away out here.
Microphone.
All right, let, wait, hold on, girls. This is just, this is just a sketch plan right now, this is not a hearing. When, no, no, that'll be the next meeting. That'll be the next meeting, we'll do that. You guys are attacking me now. Thanks, ladies. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, of course, yeah, yep. So your, this school bus is very good.
Have a good night, ladies. Good night. It's okay, I may be moving in there. Okay, all right, anything else? She grabbed a point about the curve in the road there, that looks like a standard ordinary curve though, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, unfortunately, it's nothing on our site. If there is a problem, I don't know if it necessarily falls on, on our design, unfortunately, but.
All right, there was, there's not much else we can do with this, you're coming back in for?
Yeah, so I think it just to.
Preliminary, you got, you can keep those comments, you can address them.
Okay, perfect, yeah, that'd be great. And then I think our next step, I believe, there's a submission for zoning board this, this upcoming, or the nineteenth, so we'll get on that and then probably soon after give more of a preliminary final application in the next, next couple of months.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night, fellas.
All right, last item on tonight's agenda is Vision Nissan located at seven eighty-five Ridge Road. Applicant Robert Sanders is requesting sketch plan review associated with the construction of a one thousand four hundred square foot fifty by twenty-inch enclosed addition for vehicle service area entry and building facade improvements on a two-point-four acre parcel located in an MC Medium Intensity Commercial District under section two sixty-nine dash five of the code of the Town of Webster.
Again, I started your evening and I'm ending it.
Yeah, I know.
Um, lame sweet, I'm going to not talk a lot, I'll talk quick and do my best here. So we were here, I don't know, back in June for this project, hasn't, basically, you had a lot of concerns, town had a lot of concerns about the site and the operation of the site. The applicant has since purchased additional property, moved a hundred cars off the site and is loading and unloading at the other location now and not loading, unloading and loading on Ridge Road, which was one of the concerns that the town had. This is a new owner, they purchased it in September ninth of two thousand twenty-two, so they're trying to work with the town, trying to make sure that they are listening and doing the things that the town is looking for. We met staff out there for a meeting in September and went through the concerns that the town had. This plan has been revised to sort of further delineate access around the building and how we're redelineating for the new building addition. This building addition is for dropping off vehicles, so people, when they're dropping off their vehicles for service, know where to go, because right now, a lot of confusion and congestion is coming because they don't know where to drop their vehicles off. This gives them somewhere to go, pull into the garage, get out of their car, give their keys to the desk, drop their car off for service and then they can go on their way with their day. So we've, this is the same, just, we're just doing facade improvements in that building addition, which is just mainly for the, like I said, for dropping off cars for service. There were formerly variances granted, about the fifty-foot rear setback line was granted by the ZBA in August of two thousand seventeen. And the, and then there was another variance that was done on the property line to the west to reduce that setback that the, that the ZBA granted a variance for that's on the approved original site plan. We have tried to, we're trying to honor the setbacks that were originally approved and we did go back and look at that back area, there is a berm that's there in between that residential area and there is a, is a good, there is a good buffer there. It does look like there's some stone that goes over that buffer that we're planning to remove and then we've tried to delineate all this on the site plan. This is a sketch plan, so if you think we're going in the right direction, I'll stop talking and we'll come back for a site plan and answer any questions you got. How's that?
You learn, once you buy it, don't sell it back. Yeah, we, we actually were on the site and that was the biggest concern I had at the time was the buffer in the back and they do meet the buffer in the rear and it's heavily vegetated, you can't even see through it there. And apparently the applicant has bought another piece of land somewhere, because one of the issues we always had were vehicles parked there, you know, on the road, unloading and now there is no unloading of vehicles.
How do they bring their cars over?
They transport, they drive them.
They drive them, they just drive them, snap them.
They've changed that side there, so anyways, with the reduction in it and they're showing with a twenty-five-foot passway is there, this is a whole lot better when they first came over there.
There was a PRC, PRC comment about marking that fire lane, which we will add to the plan as well.
And then one of the questions also was the, let's see, confirmed, is it stormwater pond maintenance agreement?
Yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Okay, so you want to note that, so you've got that?
Yeah, I, I'll have to look, I'll have to do some research because the owners changed and.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, the pond, the big pond that's right there, they cleaned that all out. That's on the other parcel. But I don't know, I don't know what kind of an agreement there was for the whole thing. That, that's a quite large detention pond right there.
Yeah, I'll have to do some more research on.
I believe there's one in the back also, isn't there, Josh, in the back corner?
Yes.
Right? Ain't the ruse. All right, anyways, that's something you can address, the preliminary. Anybody, any concerns or questions on that?
No.
What's that?
Yeah, the one thing I can't, I don't bring cars there anymore.
No, I think you might have that. Give it to him, I suppose, just. Have you got the PRC comments? PRC comments on it? I haven't seen them, I haven't seen, after the PRC, I tried to write them down. There's just a few of them on there. All right, yeah, if they're coming in an email, I can just.
Yeah, they were just finalized today with the holiday, we weren't able to get them.
Yeah, sure, no problem. There's just a few of them on there, it's not a big deal. All right? Okay, with that, I guess.
Because of impact, it's probably just curious, this parcel I know has been in some times early years, putting things on. At one time, they were going to put a bump out on the east side of the building.
Yeah, five foot bump out.
Was that ever built?
No.
I don't remember the building, it was being torn off and rebuilt for.
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Not that I'm aware of. Oh, there it is. Where's that, that, that bit? That must be it. That would have been previous owner probably, but that, that bump out, it looks like it goes all the way down.
Yeah, it was supposed to give access for better vehicle maintenance on the inside at one point. They just don't have a number of being built.
Yes. Yeah, we just show a little bump out there, and then it's straight all the way back, so I don't know if that was done for the service base.
It was just more curiosity, I mean.
Yeah, I, I was, I, I don't, I'm not really sure. Okay, you're all set for tonight, I guess. Okay, thank you. Is there something, was there something else on there too, I'm sorry?
Oh, that's good.
Was there another argument there?
No.
Was it? That was the last one?
That was it.
Okay, all right, just a minute, a minute's fine.
We got minutes for it.
Minutes for the 17th, oh, September 3rd, September 17th, and October 1st, October 1st, somebody else is going to have to sign them because I wasn't here.
Why can't you sign them?
Because I wasn't here, October 1st.
Yeah, I sent you, I sent you some of those. I can sign them, that's so fine.
All right.
We've got to make a motion.
I made a motion, I made a motion to approve the September 3rd, September 17th, and October 1st meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a motion? Need a second? You have a second on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who knows who's not here tonight? Tony?
What's that?
You know who's not here tonight?
Yeah, Dave.
The camera guy.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I just saw him say it. That was the first.
All right, I guess that's it, folks, thanks for coming in. We're done for the evening.
Yeah, so, yeah. He's, he just has to sign, I believe.
Hope you're the guy trying to catch your leave there, I'm there.
Anybody talked to Charlie, is he coming tonight, he's just not making it until the regular town board meeting?
I have to talk to Charlie.
Yeah, you're right.
Maybe he's rolling himself here.
He could be, and obviously, I don't know if the workshop we need legal. But it is 6:30, so I want to welcome everybody in the live audience and also watching at home on this rainy Thursday, November 21st, 2024, to the Town of Webster workshop. Tonight, we have three scheduled agenda items, and the first agenda item is a presentation by Bridget Harvey, Director of Communications, and Paul Adams, our Director of Finance, on the Spectrum slash Charter One franchise fee revenue that the town gets annually, so I'll hand them the time to you guys.
All right. Yeah, we thought we'd do just a quick review of the revenues that are related to the cable, cable TV franchise access fees. Essentially, can we flip, yeah, next slide. Essentially, we have the annual cable TV franchise fee. In the past, we've actually had some revenues from a franchise fee audit, and since the cable department is basically being wound down, we'll also have some revenues from the sale or auction of the assets. On the next slide, as you can see, the annual cable TV franchise fee, it's received annually from Charter One Communications, usually around March of each year. The amount received is based on cable subscribership in the Town of Webster. Historically, historical revenue data on this, on this slide dates back to 1995, as you can see, in the 2000s, cable TV really took off, so, so did the revenue. I think last year, we did about 520,000 in revenue, so, you know, it became popular in the 2000s, and believe it or not, it's still popular. So.
Then I'll just mention before we go on to the next slide, that this is unrelated to cable access television production, and purely is based on subscribership, as Paul mentioned.
That is correct. So back in 2015, we actually had an audit performed by a firm called Troy and Banks. The result of the audit came in in 2016, and they actually recovered $44,000, so basically, they took a look at the franchise fee agreement, compared it to what we're actually receiving, and detected any variances from the contractual arrangement. So it was a 50% contingency based contract, and we're actually looking to do this again. So actually, on tonight's board, slate of board resolutions, there's a lesser resolution to move forward with Troy and Banks, since it's been about eight years since they've done so. We think, based on what Troy and Banks is telling me, they think they would expect a pretty good recovery, but you never know until you take a look. So it is a 50% contingent, contingent fee contract, they don't find anything, you don't pay anything, and they have had successful audits performed in some other jurisdictions, such as Salina, Arundicote, and the city of Buffalo.
And as Paul mentioned earlier, with the wind down of cable access, the assets that are not in use, or that have reached the end of their useful life from this room in here, or the Spectrum building, or cable studio over on Picture Parkway, will be assessed by experts from our IT department, as well as AV consultant, the AV consultant who we have partnered with, to do quite a few things over the past year. So these assets include video equipment, microphones, furniture, et cetera. So what's next for us is nothing in terms of the annual franchise fee, as we mentioned, no action is needed for the receipt of that. As Paul mentioned, town board will consider a resolution to conduct a cable TV franchise audit with Troy and Banks. And then what's next is the assessment of those assets of the equipment that is being stored and has come out of the Spectrum building over on Picture Parkway, as well as the equipment in this room that has reached the end of its useful life for the town, or it's, it's just no longer in use by us. So that's all. Are there any questions?
Where, where will this be, where will it be sold? Is there a certain auction, or how is it sold?
I guess I need to talk into the microphone, how's it sold?
So I think that would be something that we discuss with likely Dan Agnew, who we've contracted with for AV services, who is more attuned to the AV, where something reliable would be in terms of auction or sale, and what the best way to get any return on that would be.
Understand. The last audit in 2015 was a 44,000 recovery? Here I go again. Was it 50% back then as well, so they found $88,000, and we got 44?
Uh, no, I believe they found 44, and we had to pay 22.
Okay, I got it, got it.
I think it also has a residual effect, if they find an issue with the contract, that will correct it going forward, so theoretically, theoretically, your revenue should be higher each year going forward.
Well, I think it's a great opportunity, I mean, if there's no, no cash outlay to find money, I think it's a great opportunity. I'll be curious to see what happens, because in my, in my opinion, as of late, it seems that cable is going down in lieu of streaming services, so it'll be interesting how much and if anything is found.
Yeah, certainly, subscribership is trending down, but I think the price, the prices that were raised, the amount we received, has actually stayed pretty steady, which is shocking, I mean, it's.